Good evening, everyone. I thank you so much for being here today. It's April the 2nd, 2024. Our thoughtful today is we make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give. This serves Winston Churchill. We're going to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Cowan if he would lead us in our invocation tonight and our pledge, sir.
Our Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you, dear God, for your blessings. Lord, we thank you for our county. Lord, we thank you for all the people that offer their time to serve because it's not easy. And, Lord, we just ask you to bless them. We ask you, Lord, please give us wisdom tonight as we go through the business meeting of the county. And, Lord, we just thank you for all things that you've done for us here in Newton County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion that will approve the agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the agenda.
So moved.
I've already spoken to Chairman. I would like to amend the agenda to add...
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's the chairman in here.
Commission, guys, listen, we're not even going to start off like that. We're not going to start off like that. So you'd like to amend the agenda to do what, ma'am?
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. This is the seventh time that I'm asking to add the SPOLOST 2017-2023 discussion in regards to the District 3 projects. Correction to the last meeting, I forgot that I asked via email to add it to the agenda three times. So this is the seventh time I'm asking in behalf of District 3, 2017 SPOLOST and 2023 to be added to the agenda as a discussion.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, can I come ask a question?
You need to make a motion whether to second it and then we can get this... Well, we need to get a motion on the floor before we can get to discussion. So if you want to make a motion, you can, or is there a second? Thank you.
Ms. Jacke, can you make sure you put in the minutes as number seven?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I seek a motion that will approve the agenda, please. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes 3-1, thank you. Next is citizens' comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You can comment at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Is the mic on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, three minutes, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Cynthia Butler, a taxpayer of Newton County, and I'm going to have to hurriedly say what I need to say. The Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, Marcelo Baines, is uninformed about the ruling from the Supreme Court in 1976 and parliamentary procedures from Robert Rules of Order Code of Conduct. Robert Rule states in a public meeting... Okay, this is about...
What number?
About citizen comments, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, go ahead.
Number 11, citizen comment. Everyone attending a meeting should respect other attendees' right to both listen and be heard. The Chairman Marcelo Baines approves all agenda items on Newton County agenda. Robert Rules of Order states the Chairman should control the flow of the meeting by recognizing members who asked to speak. Robert Rules of Order state all members in a public meeting speak once before allowing one another person to speak. To ensure citizens are informed and go into a meeting, the Supreme Court enacted open meeting laws in all 50 states since 1976. The Supreme Court ruled that a city ordinance imposing restrictions in a public meeting is unconstitutional. People have a right, freedom of speech, in a public meeting. It is embarrassing, unprofessional, that the Chairman of the Board, Marcelo Baines, allows an agenda item by refusing to have citizens to speak at a board meeting. The Chairman does not know the ruling by the Supreme Court and the Robert Rules of Order Code of Conduct. I ask, should we reelect the Chairman or Commissioner that does not know the law or try to deny our rights? I want the Chairman to answer my question. Was it his agenda item to deny us to speak, or was it a Commissioner? If it was a Commissioner, I want his name. I do not believe in throwing a rock and hiding your hand. Who this person is on the board is an enemy of Newton County. I would like to recommend the Chairman, our Commissioner purchase a current Robert Rules of Order Code of Conduct, review the Supreme Court ruling before they put an item on the agenda. How can you conduct business in Newton County when our leaders don't know the law and don't know Robert Rules of Order? Cynthia Butler, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Karen Brooks, G65, Kenton Row.
Guys, so let's make sure we get this correct tonight. We don't do applauding like that. It is an open, public meeting, so please refrain from doing that. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
This is regarding an agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
The item of citizen comments. You elected officials probably refer to me as constituent, a voter, or a resident of Newton County. I like to refer to myself as one of "we, the people." I cannot believe that on the agenda, you actually have an item to remove citizen comments. We, the people, have already been censored on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube, so I'm guessing you're trying to follow their example, or someone is. Other avenues have sprung up that do not silence "we, the people," and we will make noise. I would ask this, is even legal under the sunshine laws? I can tell you that whoever votes to silence "we, the people" should not be reelected or elected, for sure. Shame on whoever asked to put this on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hey, good evening, I'm speaking on two agenda topics tonight. My name is Samantha Day, and I'm from the Stone Lee community, and I want to use my voice as a citizen to express some concerns. I am very disheartened that you, as all, as elected officials, would want to silence your constituents. In today's society, we are constantly teaching our kids and people to stand up for any injustices and their opinions to create an inclusive community. However, by even discussing the removal of citizen's comments, you are silencing your constituents and not allowing them to have a voice. In my life, I have learned there will always be people who don't understand the decisions that you make. In addition, in every job, you have people who complain and voice their unhappiness. It may not be done in a professional manner, but when you're on the receiving end, it's part of the job just to listen to them voice their complaints. I would like to share a quote tonight by Nicole O'Neill, and she said, "When you find the courage to use your voice, it has the power to positively inspire and change the lives of others. It's one of the special gifts you have to offer the world, and it's something to be cherished and championed, never hidden." So I encourage you tonight, when you have the discussion on removing citizen's comments, to think about the people's voices you are silencing and what you're teaching the future leaders of our country. Would you want to be compliant with all the rules, laws, and decisions that are made, or would you want to speak up for what you believe? Now, to move on to the other purpose that I'm here for tonight, the Stone Lee community and the change of the ordinance for building permits. If you're part of the Stone Lee community, please stand up. On March 19th meeting, Mr. Baines made a comment that we're trying to evict the property owner from his property. However, that is not our purpose. We simply want him to complete building his house, or move his RV to a RV park that is equipped to handle the sewage and gray water disposal, which eliminate the environmental concerns that are arising with this said property. We would love to welcome this property owner to our community, but we need him to build his house. I am still concerned about where and if the waste is being disposed of properly, as there is no septic on the land to my knowledge. By getting the ordinance changed, we can prevent this from happening around the county. Did you know that in Newton County right now, there are over 100 land plots for sale, and a few of those plots are in Stone Lee? I do not want to see this occur throughout the county where people can just pitch their RV and live there for an extended amount of time just because they simply moved a dumpster. We've been very graciously and been patient for two years for him to build his house. However, he's committed to not following through when building his home, and we need an ordinance in place to prevent this from occurring, and we do not want to see this go on for a whole another year. Thank you, I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dave Norton from New Bern, how y'all doing again?
Good evening.
In reference to citizen's comments, a couple hundred years ago, people came over from overseas, the people that were already here, the Native Americans, they were silenced. Then those same people that came over, they brought some people over from Africa, they were silenced. Then in Nazi Germany, they silenced the Jews. So, right now, the level of trust to the government is low. When you do these sort of things, it lowers the trust even more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Benjamin Deagle, I'm part of the Stone Lee community. I'd like to voice a dissenting opinion about this. I keep getting these sticky notes on my mailbox, and the first thing I did when I found the first one is I went ahead and I went to the gentleman's property to go speak to him face to face. His name is Willie, he bought and paid for the land himself. He's building his house out of pocket so he doesn't tie up his money in a mortgage, and he's gotten permits for everything. He was a very, very nice fellow, and I believe in a community that builds trust and relationship with one another, to love thy neighbor, and I believe as a community, we can actually go and maybe potentially help him out and make our neighborhood look the way we want to look. I don't believe in putting laws and restrictions on people without first discussing it with them, and come to find out, he has not received one of these notices. So we're talking a lot about silencing people, and to come to find out, he was trying to get silenced by not getting shown one of these things on his mailbox. So I gave him my copy, I made a photocopy of it, and then last week, when I was out of town, I came home to another one, a second one on my mailbox. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the first meeting, I work an hour away from Oxford in Atlanta, so that's, apologize for my attire, I came straight from work. But I just really think, I believe in love, I believe that, I would like to be the change I want to see in a community, and it's just very disheartening to see people jumping to laws and not jumping to love. So that's just what I wanted to say, this is my first time here, so thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Annette Austin, I've not been to a meeting in a while, and I really had not intended to speak upon arriving here, but it's hard to believe that anyone would even consider not having citizen's comments. And then at the same time, you know, when trying to put an agenda item in place about the SPOLOST, that was summarily put down. So it begs the question, how did that agenda item even get on there? I mean, how? And Mr. Baines, I apologize, but I have to hold you responsible because you're the Chair. And an agenda item comes before you, you are the one who agrees to put the agenda item on. Just like you basically made a decision not to put hers on, dealing with SPOLOST and District 3, which she's been trying to get on forever. So I'm not even in District 3, I don't understand, I'm just a citizen, just watching, and it just doesn't make sense to me, because I know that if it was me, and I was being given the hard time like that to put something through that's going to help my people and my citizens, and then I keep getting slammed every time I do something to try to help my citizens, and I don't understand the reasoning behind it, and maybe you can explain that to the people here, because I'm confused, perhaps everyone else in here is confused too. But we can put an agenda item to silence people, but you can't put an agenda item on to help a district in need. Figure that out.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be up here, I've got page 2, the rezoning, is that an agenda item?
It is, yes, sir.
Alright, so everybody with that, get in line. Okay, I live off of Little Haynes Drive, which is near the rezoning on Kent Rock where they want to rezone. Mr. Rousseau wants to rezone, he says at the last meeting, it'll be just a mile and quarter away, everything else will be the same. I believe him, I want to point out some things. I just went and took some pictures of the place where he operates now, loads of tires sitting around, junk cars, junk trucks, etc., a shed for a shop, they're not pulling in anywhere. So also, I want to notice that when they, this was proposed, there was a lot of rules and regulations for him to follow. The law was clear against regulation, my understanding. The law had a driveway put on it, against understanding. There is access to Highway 138, a state highway. Can you just put a culvert in and anybody go out on a state highway now? So I just wonder if he is not following rules now, will he follow the rules that were set in there when that comes about? My last thing, which is much more important, same but different, egress. I went out there today, when you're heading south on Highway 138, which is the way traffic will flow, you would turn into his property to the right. Where he's at now, there is one half mile visibility in Walnut Grove. You ever been to Walnut Grove? It is straight, it is flat, he's in the middle of it, you can see it both ways. Where he wants to put his new lot, when you come up to it, there is one tenth of a mile visibility before you see his driveway. So if there's a truck pulling out there, you've got six seconds to stop if you see it immediately. It's not going to pull out and take off, it's going to pull out and go very slow, and if you're not watching, when it pulls out, you might have three seconds to slam on your brakes to stop before his trucks head out, and they go south, he said, to I-20, and over to Texas, he said they go out to Texas. So let's say they're pulling into that lot, okay? Coming up 138 north on a hill, how long will it take them to pull in that lot? Going uphill, pulling uphill in the lot?
Sir? Hey, guys, if you, thank you.
Okay, so when they're coming back from their runs, they're going uphill, they're going to pull in an uphill lot, there's cars coming over the hill with one tenth of a mile visibility to a semi tractor trailer pulling out or pulling in over that hill. Probably going to take 10 or 15 seconds. Everybody coming down that hill, hopefully they stop. It's going to be very dangerous now. Used to be my kids were driving there, they drive there now because they come and visit. Soon it will be my grandkids driving there, I still drive there, and I'm not getting any better about driving. I'm worried about the safety, and I'm also worried that, as he said, it will be the same, which go look up at Walnut Grove, you'll see it's not a pretty picture up there if he wants to move into our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Guys, we've got enough time for about three more people next, if you would, come on up.
My name is Todd Richards, I live on 155 Little Haynes Drive, and I drove an 18-wheeler for 35 years, so maybe I could give you all a little bit of a different perspective on this. I had so much to say, I had to write it down to get it under three minutes. In my opinion, this is not a drop yard, 24/7, it's going to be open, never close, trucks will be coming in and out day and night. It has an office, it has a shop, and this place needs to be considered, it needs to be either on the access road on the side of the interstate or in industrial area where noise and traffic is not an issue. All other businesses are nine to five in the area, nine to five-ish. They don't stay open all the time, have shops running and all that stuff. He says the shop just changed tires and stuff. Changing tires is the loudest thing you can do to an 18-wheeler, because you have to use these great big air wrenches to get the nuts off, and they are very loud. And if you're doing that at 2:00 in the morning, you're going to wake people up. Let's see, you can... There are houses all around the area, 138 has too much traffic now. How can an 18-wheeler grossing as much as 80,000 pounds pulling a 53-foot trailer? That's a big unit, plus the tractor, you're talking 70 feet or more long. This is a big unit. And not only that, but if you can picture Conyers here and Walnut Grove here, the side going up to Conyers, you can see the place far enough ahead. But the other way, like Jim was saying, the cars go in a dip, and they come up a dip from Walnut Grove, and there they are, and there's a truck pulling out. You're going to have, these cars, speed limit's 55. These cars are going to be running 60, 65, you know how it is. They're going to be running fast, and they're going to top that hill, and that truck pulls out, they either going to hit him in the tractor, or if they go under his trailer, they're going to lose their heads. So this is a dangerous situation coming from Walnut Grove. This is not, not good. And the last thing I want to say is the planning did not approve this. And I think they made the right decision not to approve it, because there's a big safety issue, there's going to be a lot of noise, the shop has big 14-foot bay doors, and at night, they're going to leave them all open, so running them air wrenches, they, you know... They said, well, I'm doing the work in the shop, it might as well be outside with all them bay doors.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
I do not recommend this.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Randy Berger, my wife and I have been taxpayers in Newton County for going on 10 years now. I'm here to speak to the rezoning with the two previous gentlemen just spoke to. Before I get too into it, I'd want to make sure that all of you, please, take an opportunity and look at some of the photos and maps that I took today of this area. It illustrates everything that these two gentlemen were just speaking of, about the speed limit, the safety issue, the hill, the blind hill that they have to come out of, the entranceway off the state highway that they put in there with the culvert, that's already an issue, it's putting rocks, big rocks, not number 57 rocks, big rocks, onto Highway 138 in an unsafe area. I've also illustrated in these photos how he has been doing work, and to my understanding, there's no approval or permits to do any work there. No clearing or nothing, and he's cleared nearly a five-acre lot already. So please take a look at the photos that I have provided, so you have a little more in-depth knowledge of what I'm speaking of. Public safety, that's the number one issue that we're going to have a problem with, because the speed limit, like Todd said, my neighbor, is 55 miles an hour, it's not 45 miles an hour, and it does come over a blind hill, and nobody does 55 miles an hour in there, nobody. The average speed is 65, a lot of people do 70 miles an hour through there. There's no way a truck can turn in and out off of Kent Rock, off of Mount Zion, off the entrance that he has now. It's just not possible, people are going to die. That's all there is to it. In the area, because of intersections like this, Miller Bottom Road, up the road in Walton County, there's another intersection, I can't remember the name of the road, there's been over 50 accidents this year, over, and a lot of those resulted in fatalities. And that's what's going to happen, we're going to have more fatalities if you let this happen. Secondly, the public health, this sits on top of Newton County watershed there, and you can't tell me that this guy's just going to change tires there, it's not going to happen. He's going to change oil, he's going to change antifreeze, he's going to do all this stuff to his trucks, grease and everything else, and he's right at the top of the hill, at the top of the watershed, where we all get our drinking water from. This is unacceptable. Let's see, what else do I have here? Got the speeds, school buses, several school buses routes go through this area multiple times a day, not just Newton County, but Walton County school buses go through here also. That's a big thing to consider. And as Jim said, if he's not doing the right thing right now, there's no way on this earth that he's going to do the right thing if you approve this.
Thank you, sir.
If it's a road, it's going to be more than it ever should be.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chair, my name is Willie Smith, and I'm at 96 West Lake Drive, Oxford, Georgia, in Stone Lee subdivision. I am the guy, my wife and I, Adrian Smith, that owns the camper and own that property at 96 West Lake Drive. First of all, I'd like to say to this committee and everyone here today, I'm an ordained minister first, so I can't deal with any foolishness or no mess. So I just want to make that clear. That's why I never came to say anything, but out of those first, me and my wife decided to build our dream home there, and we bought that property. And we went to build our house, and I own my own business. I'm a contractor in DeKalb County, but a couple of contracts fell through, and thank God, today I just signed one for $800,000. But anyway, we was going to build our house out of our pocket. I wish, like Ben said, someone would have came and said something to us about whatever it was, we would try to accommodate that. But anyway, moving forward, we had a contractor out of Ederton, so we got a loan, but now I can pay it off, so we are going to build this house. And by June, we should have it dry, it in, framed up. The plan is to get the inside, outside done first, and then go to the inside. But anyway, so we asking for an extension to, for like, I think it'll probably be another five, four or five months before we can complete the whole house. And I know it has been two years, and me and my wife, believe me, you, we do not want to live in a camper. We are tighter than you are. But anyway, I want to make this clear to you. Change, I think a change should be in stipulation of filing complaints. All the complaints that were filed against my wife and I, everything was false. And I think that people can use that complaint thing, because it's open to the public, to use it to their advantage for a vehicle, to just see a person, if you don't like something, you can come out and just say, well, we're going to go file a complaint, and we're going to get us a whole group of people, or whatever we do, we don't like what we see. I would think for Newton County, come out, go talk to the person. Go and talk to that family, see who they are, see what type of people they is. You don't know what kind of trouble or what a person is going through. But I know it's political grandstanding for Elena Sanders, and what a circus we have here in Newton County with this thing, what a circus. And it's sad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, you have, sir, you have about one minute left before we go to public comment. Thank you, sir.
First of all, all your items you have here, you keep linking them in as a joint together. They need to be separate. They need to be separate, you got items from three to five, whatever. Now with the items, you got them from 12 to 18. 12, 13, no concern. From 14 down, the zoning, there's no way possible we can put a fleet or parking and everything in District 3 or... or parking and everything in District Three or any other area because what it brings in is also not only parking, it brings in drugs, it brings in prostitutes, it brings in all that. I have a trucking company, and I do that, I'm gonna take these off and I read with this. But what I'm saying to the Commissioners, if you allow this to come in, you gonna bring in everybody else from downtown. I retired from Fulton County, tax assessor office, the manager, and know all this for fact. So we don't have, need to have that. Thank you, how you doing, Mr. Ronnie? Everybody, but we don't need that. Now y'all keep linking in all these agendas to cover up, and it's only two or three measures that we're talking about. But if I say twelve to eighteen, I gotta bring all them up. But what I'm telling you is, if you allow this downhill Almond Road, coming around McDonald's, all I did, the state approved for the access, but it did not approve to have the trucking and all this. Hey, that thing's a ticket.
Thank you.
I understand what you say.
Thank you, sir, but we gotta, but we gotta go to public, and we gotta go to our zoning.
That thing on record, but what I'm telling you is this.
Sir, we got to go into our zoning.
You have to, you have to abide by what the citizens say.
Sir, we.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Applewhite. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman and Board.
Max, you guys again, guys, we in a public meeting, please refrain from talking inside the public meeting, please. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you. And we have a few petitions this evening, Chairman. Our first petition today, it's a conditional use permit. Case number is CUP twenty-four dash zero 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 two. The proposed use is an office with fleet parking, currently located at Ninety-Almond Road. The parcel size is eleven point four five acres. The tax ID is zero zero two five zero nine three. The future land use map is a development node. The existing zoning is highway commercial, and it's also in the Almond Overlay Tier Two, which is a non-residential mixed-use tier. Watershed is the Yellow River, located in Commissioner District Three. The owner is listed as MI Sweetwater LLC. The petitioner is Owen Midor, and the representative today is Jordan Edwards from the Galloway Law Firm. An applicant's intent is to establish an office with fleet parking and storage. So the subject site, as we said, the subject site is actually in a regularly shaped lot. Um, it is long and narrow, and has only limited, um, road frontage on Almond Road Overpass to the west. It is located currently behind a gas station, which sits, and you'll see the aerial shows where the gas station sits. It is also flanked to the north by railroad, and going to the south is adjacent to I twenty, Interstate twenty, and it has the Yellow River on the east side of it. And again, it's eleven point four five acres and currently zone highway commercial. There is an existing building on the property, which applicant is proposing to use for the business. So based on the site plan that was received back in February of this year, uh, we looked at a few items. Um, we are fencing the property development standards, general design standards, and signage. The site plan in the letter of intent indicates the property will be used for an office with fleet parking business, and the applicant has provided development services with a survey. And they will use the existing entrance off of Almond Overpass Road. They will be parking pickup trucks, the fleet consists of pickup trucks for the business that will be located there. And any signage that goes up has to be in accordance with Section five-two-five dash zero-two-zero D of the ordinance. In conclusion, applicant is proposing to lease the office to a sta- to an established provider of erosion-controlled services. And this provider would primarily use the property for storing silt fence products in the existing building and parking the small number of pickup trucks it uses to transport these materials to the local construction sites. Staff recommends that should the board approve this cup, it should be approved with the following recommended conditions. So should a petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for a cup for an office with fleet parking, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. So to the owner's agreement, to abide by the following development standards and regulations. One, the cup will be for an office with fleet parking. Two, prior to the allowance of any outdoor storage on the property, the applicant will provide a plan showing area in which the storage will occur and to be approved by Development Services. Three, outdoor storage is limited to twenty-five percent of the lot, should they opt to do that. Four, outdoor storage areas and the refuse containers shall be screened and buffered so as not to be visible from the public right of ways or abutting residentially zoned properties. Five, truck parking is limited to the fleet owned by the business. Six, the business must obtain all approvals from the department as well as obtain and maintain a business license. And seven, the wrecker service, salvage yard, abandonment, um, recovery or repossession of automobiles and trucks and temporary storage of said vehicles is prohibited. So this is the property we're looking at, you see, it's, um, this has an elongated shape. We've got the Yellow River on the eastern boundary here, there's a railroad to the north, and of course Interstate twenty to the south, and this is the Almond Overpass here, and their entrance is just at the top here. Current zoning is highway commercial, and there are similarly zoned commercial properties. All the red and pink properties are commercial, the yellows are residential. It's in the Yellow River watershed. This is a development node, so pretty much the entire node up here is development node for the future land use map. The green would be the parks, rec, and conservation, basically follows the Yellow River and distributaries, and any flood plain areas. This is a survey that was submitted by the applicant. And this is their concept plan, so i- it shows this is the existing building and the proposed parking area on the existing gravel patch in the blue. And if there are any questions, this is a public hearing, Chairman.
Thank you, just need to go to the public hearings, that's correct?
It is a public hearing, sir, yes.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna open up our public hearing tonight. The applicant and those that wanna speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time, you have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that wants to speak in favor tonight. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Thanks for having me. My name is Jordan Edwards, forty-sixty-two Peachtree Road, Atlanta, three oh three one nine. Uh, here to speak for the applicant and property owner tonight in this request for a conditional use permit to allow office with, um, uh, fleet parking at Ninety-Almond Road. Um, Ms. Applewhite's report was comprehensive, so I don't wanna spend too much time rehashing all that. I do want to also introduce, though, Glenn Phillips, he's in the back here. Uh, he's with T E C, the Erosion Companies. Uh, that's the business that will be operating this use if the board approves the use permit tonight. Um, and, and he can speak to any specific questions y'all have about that. But in a nutshell, T E C does, uh, provide sedimentation control measures at construction sites. And that is essentially silt fences and similar kinds of materials to keep mud in construction sites and not leaking out into roads and streams. Um, so that might sound simple, it's not, um, it's very important work. And T E C's been doing it for a very long time. So they've been in business for more than twenty-five years. Um, they started up in Cherokee County, Woodstock, um, just that one location at the beginning, and now they're, have seventeen offices in five states. Um, so they're a very responsible company, and, and they know what they're doing very well. From a land use standpoint, um, what they'd be doing as far as zoning is operating a small office, um, that would provide administrative and, and support services for their teams. Um, those teams load up silt fence, those other materials in pickup trucks, and then drive to construction sites in surrounding counties, and then install it there. So, um, other than the office, there's gonna be very little actual activity during the day on the site. Those fleet vehicles, pickup trucks, um, three-fifties and, and the like, park overnight, and then, um, are in use early the next morning. Now, the property itself, as Ms. Applewhite's already described, is actually kind of awkward and honestly not much use, uh, for a whole lot of things, but it's actually perfect for this specific use. On its four sides, the property, uh, is next to the back of a gas station that's on Almond Road, uh, a railroad right of way that's a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet wide, um, that's standard. The Yellow River on the east side, and then I twenty to the south. Um, so it, the only private property it's adjacent to is the gas station, and that's just the back of it there. Um, it's about eleven acres, but T E C would actually only be using one acre, leasing one acre of it. Uh, that one acre is in the center of the property, um, and again, it is just not close to any neighbors or anything like that. It is essentially, one, one benefit of this property is this location very close to the, uh, Almond Road on and off ramps on twenty. Um, so the benefit there is that the fleet vehicles are gonna spend hardly any time at all on local roads to be able to get onto twenty and then off to their job sites, um, very quickly. And the other thing I wanna point out is that T E C is gonna use the existing development on the property. Um, so as a result of this use permit, there's not gonna be any new development on the site. The property is already zoned for this use, it just needs this use permit so that we don't need a rezoning. Uh, Planning Commission recommended approval of this request, um, with several conditions that Ms. Applewhite has already been through. We've got no issues with any of those conditions, um, so we just respectfully ask that you vote to approve it tonight. Um, we'll be happy to answer any questions you've got, otherwise I'll reserve what time I've got left, uh, just in case.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We wanna move over to those that would like to oppose tonight, you also have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. Anyone like to oppose tonight? Thank you, sir, um, Ms. Applewhite. I think this is in District, um, Three.
Chairman, I would like to add also that the Planning Commission recommended approval for this project, for this petition.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
I did receive calls from residents once this was approved by the Planning Commission. Um, unfortunately, some residents cannot make the Planning Commission meeting. Um, I wish they were taped so they could actually go back and see those various, uh, items, the public meeting should be taped. But I would like to table this for them to speak to the residents of that area because of the concerns they had. So there needs to be a conversation, was there, let me ask this question first. Was there a meeting for those that live in that area, although it may be on the interstate portion, but there are homes that are kinda sorta close to the area? So they need to know that this is coming, so has there been any conversation with the residents in that area?
Uh, not to my knowledge, Commissioner, I don't know if the applicant reached out privately to them, but we have not had a community meeting.
Okay. So I would like to, uh, table this and have a meeting scheduled here at the courthouse for those residents in the area to discuss with the applicant. So I would like to table item number, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses today, forgive me, um, CUP two-four zero 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 two. Um, to table it, how many days has to be tabled to, for what, sixty days or thirty days?
Bring it back in June, that would be adequate time.
Okay. The first meeting in June.
Is there a second?
Second meeting in June.
Is there a second? It's been, uh, motion that we table this, um, in second, um, it's been tabled, tabled this by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Henderson, in a discussion. All in favor? You got a question? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Commissioner Cowan.
Okay, is this the old O H Materials building stand, do you remember? Is that the old building that, uh, O H Materials was over there, that occupational hazard stuff, they handled hazardous stuff? Building's still there, and it's actually down in a hole, kinda. You can't really see anything from the interstate, I don't believe. Um, I just wanna make sure I knew this is the right place. Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Of tabling?
It's five oh, stand table. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our second petition this evening is a rezoning, and it has a companion case, which is a conditional use permit. This is also an office, um, the applicant intends to have an office with fleet parking and, uh, having truck repair abilities for his fleet. The applicant is Ms. Alexander Russo, he has asked or put in a request for the board to table his petition until the June meeting so that he can have an opportunity to address the Planning Commission's and residents' concerns that arose at the Planning Commission meeting. And this would be for the rezoning case as well as the companion case following it.
Thank you, uh, there's been a, a request to table this, is that motion supported? No, thank you, Ms. Applewhite, continue, please.
Our, Chairman, our next report today is R E Z twenty-four dash zero 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 three. There is a companion case, CUP twenty-four dash zero 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 one. The future land use map for this property is commercial. The existing zoning is agricultural residential. The proposed zoning is highway commercial. The watershed is the Big Haynes Creek. It is located at forty-three thirty-one, Highway one thirty-eight. The parcel size is five point one one acres. Tax ID is thirty-six dash two-three, it's just the one parcel he's looking at. This is located in Commissioner District Three. Carter area is low-density rural residential, and the owner and the petitioner is Alexander Russo. An applicant's intent is to seek the rezoning from agricultural residential to highway commercial to establish an office with the fleet parking business, and as well as allow truck repair for his fleet. And just a brief history on this parcel, in September of nineteen ninety-nine, it was rezoned from A R to C H to construct a commercial shopping center. Uh, this as well as the lot adjacent to the north of it, so he owns two parcels, but he's only looking to rezone just the one, but both were rezoned back in ninety-nine. This, however, reverted back to the A R zoning because the shopping center was never built. In, um, June sixteen twenty twenty, we had a petition for a rezoning from agricultural to highway commercial again, and that was also followed by a companion case, conditional use permit. And it was to seek an office with, uh, fleet parking and repair. This was subsequently withdrawn by the applicant at the time. And then we have, um, some of the concerns at that time would've been the increased traffic on the County Kent Rock Road, which is adjacent to this property, and also how the use would affect, potentially affect property values in the area. On March twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four, the Planning Commission denied the petition by vote of four zero. And again, the concerns centered about what the residents had raised as well as traffic on Highway one thirty-eight. And just a brief, um, little of the subject site. It is, uh, five point one one acres, tax ID's thirty-six dash zero three, currently zoned agricultural residential. It is surrounded by both commercial and residential properties, and is currently on developed land. It is in the Carter area, low-density rural residential. The appropriate, you, one appropriate use for this, you have the uses here, I'm not gonna read through everything, but we have neighborhood level commercial, and an appropriate zoning is the highway commercial. And we have our site plan analysis, this was submitted to the, the site plan was submitted to the department in January fifth of this year. In terms of land use, he is proposing to rezone just the five point one one acres, again, for the use of the office and the fleet parking. And we have the access will be on Highway one thirty-eight. And of course, you'd have to do whatever improvements G dot recommends, since they control that state highway. The maximum impervious, impervious surface for the Big Haynes Creek watershed, they're allowed up to twenty-five percent impervious surface. But applicant is proposing to use gravel parking for the fleet. And we do have our minimum setbacks for that particular zoning, and this is already included in your packets. And we have the other considerations, the, the property or that area, there's a significant amount of rock. Um, so to have multiple septic systems for a residential development may not be a suitable use. It's probably more suitable for some kind of a non-residential use. And for the Big Haynes Creek, the reason why he has to do the con- conditional use permit is because it is a requirement for the Big Haynes. is because it is a requirement for the Big Haines Creek, if you want to do this kind of a business in that watershed. Landscaping and buffers, the applicant is proposing to leave the buffer along Kent Rock Road undisturbed and to landscape somewhere along Highway 138, so to shield the business from neighboring residential properties. In conclusion to findings, there are factors which would support the rezoning request, such as the future land use map, which has already identified this area for commercial development. However, some of the properties in the area have remained, remain residential or have residential uses, or they're undeveloped or vacant land. There is an auto auction business is approximately three miles to the west of this business. Recommended conditions. Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved highway commercial, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the property as follows. A, to keep it as an office with fleet parking, truck repair. B, the following uses shall be prohibited: adult bookstore entertainment, auto auction, bar nightclub, campground or RV park, flea market, go-kart facility, homeless shelter, kennel, manufactured home or modular home sales, rental repair, manufactured home or modular home display, mini warehouses, pawn shop, including title-owned businesses, salvage or operation or junkyard, tattoo, body piercing, parlor, studio, tree service. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. The legal description received on January 5th that was submitted to the department, and the said site plan is currently conceptual only, it must meet or need or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance and the conditions, these conditions, prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. Unless otherwise noted here in compliance with all conditions, shall be in place prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Three, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, provide a proper ingress and egress to the site as required on Highway 138. B, there shall be no access for trucks from Kent Rock Road. C, approval from GDOT for an access point on Highway 138 is required prior to an LDP being issued. D, storm water plan to be reviewed and approved by Newton County Water, Newton County Storm Water Manager. E, provide downcast lighting. F, refuse areas and receptacles shall be placed in an accessible location in the corner farthest from the public streets and shall be enclosed on all three sides with solid opaque walls. The footside shall be a self-closing opaque gate. The walls and gates shall be a minimum of 12 inches higher than the receptacle. And G, the landscape plan to be approved by the Newton County Landscape Architect. So, this is an aerial view of the property. Mr. Russo currently owns both of these properties. He's only seeking to rezone the southern part. We have Kent Rock Road on this end here to the east, and we have Highway 138 south of it. This is the current future land use map. It shows the parcels that were rezoned, sorry, that had the flume amended to being commercial. We've got the auto auction yard here, this large commercial parcel here. And even these are, these are commercially zoned properties adjacent to him and opposite. This one is undeveloped, and we have residential use on this one here. This is undeveloped right now, and there's a residential use on that one. So, this is the zoning map. As you can see, the parcel adjacent to the west is commercial, and opposite, over 138 is also commercial. Every area in green, those are agricultural residential zonings, along with the subject parcel. It is in the Big Haines Creek watershed. This is the parcel here. This is a survey that was submitted. This is a concept plan that was submitted. He's showing the entrance off of 138, the area where the fleet will be parked. And in, at the Planning Commission, Mr. Russo expressed that this building would be for the office slash shop where he could do repairs as needed on his fleet. They're going to maintain on this star buffer along Kent Rock Road to currently shield any residences and as well as along this way. And we do have a concept, so this shows the tree buffer that he will be maintaining. This is a concept landscape plan or tree site plan. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, Chairman, this is a public hearing as well.
Thank you so much. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time, you have 10 minutes to do so. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time. Anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Thank you. We also allow 10 minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Sir, if you would, please step right here.
I'm Jim Burkholder, 105 Little Haines Drive. Want to mention two things quickly. Number one, there is no rock issue up there. Anybody living up there have a rock issue?
Sir, please.
We've all got, we've all got septic tanks.
Thank you.
No rock issue. That keeps getting mentioned, so I want to mention there is no rock issue up there. That's number one. Number two, the auto auction, we're not happy about it. I get auto parts washed into my lot occasionally, but they beat us out there. We can't, we're not going to ask them to move. If they tried to come down with the auto auction, we'd say no, but they're there, they beat us out there. Good for them. I'm done.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for the time.
Good evening.
My name is Lou LaRoca. I actually live on Kent Rock Road. I live on the main part of Kent Rock Road, where once upon a time, a car actually drove through my front family room windows because of the nature of that road. It's curvy, no shoulders, and we have tractor-trailer problems already down that road every single day. Trucks coming from Copark, cutting through from Loganville. I know the applicant can say that his trucks won't be allowed there, but the drivers will do whatever they want when they're trying to get home to their families. They will cut through. There is no regulations on that road to keep tractor-trailers off of it. And I oppose this just because of that. I've seen tractor-trailers come down that road and force other cars into the culverts because it's so narrow. The point that gentleman just made before me, I wrote it down, we're all unseptic and well. I know Newton County has water on that side, but there's no rock issues. And again, the trucks will take, the drivers will take any, any road they want to to get home. I appreciate the time, that's it.
Thanks, sir. Next, please.
Hello again, my name is Jim Reese. I'm president of the HOA Kent Rocky State's South, and I would beg you to find a better fit for this company. There are no commercial buildings on, in that intersection, even though that's commercial property right there. What that map does not show you is that there's not a gas station, a, or any commercial buildings within a mile of that intersection. And I did not move from Gwinnett to a residential herb, rural area in my estate's establishment to get moved out by a truck stop in, in my main intersection. How am I going to keep the property values? I mean, just think about your neighbors. I'm, I'm really concerned about what this is going to do to my neighborhood. Thank you.
Sir, next, please.
Good evening. My name is Randy Berger. I live right behind the auto auction, along with several of these people. I wanted to, a, a new thing, the photos that I mentioned earlier, there, there are three or four of them that if you want an example of what this lot is going to look like, there, there are some photos there of, of the applicant's temporary lot of a couple miles up the road in Walnut Grove. And that's just his temporary lot waiting on this big one to get done. Look at those pictures, you'll get an idea of what this place is going to look like and smell like. I wanted to hit it again about the school buses. The school bus go, go through there during, while schools in session, obviously, multiple buses, multiple times a day from Newton County and Walton County. Wouldn't that be a shame? He hit on the property values. When we purchased our home, property values were pretty stable, and they've been pretty stable, slightly going up in the 10 years that we've been here. If this happens, we know what's going to happen. Everybody knows what's going to happen. It's going to go right back down, and it's, and it's not going to stop. That's all I have. Please, please deny this.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, again. In my 35 years of driving, I've been to a lot of truck terminals.
Speaking to Mike Ford, for me, please. Thank you.
I've been in, I've, in my 35 years of driving, I've been to a lot of different truck terminals, and all truck terminals are in industrial areas because of the sound and the traffic and just, they're too noisy and they operate 24/7. And that's where this place belongs. I've never seen one in an area with so much residential around it. And secondly, this ought to be the first issue on everybody's mind is safety. And I'm telling you, people coming from Walnut Grove, they go down in that hole, and then they come up. When they come up, they, they're going to be running 65, 70 mile an hour, not knowing anything's wrong, and there's going to be a truck trying to ease out in front of them. It's going to take you 15 to 35 seconds just to get out of their way. Well, by then, they're going to be dead stop. So, I'm telling you, it's going to be a lot of bad accidents, and I mean, some really gory accidents happen. Cars start running under these trailers. I mean, this, this one issue should, should weigh heavy on everybody right there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve Holtholzer, and I'm at 160 Little Haines Drive. When I was in the military, I was a, I moonlighted as paramedic. I, I can't tell you how many times I saw head-on collisions. I don't know if any of you've seen one firsthand from a medic's standpoint. I say that to tell you that my wife and I both work in Loganville. We come out, we turn down Kent Rock Road. I can't tell you how many times I've been in that turning lane, and somebody's coming from Walnut Grove, head-on, in the turning lane, coming towards me. That's exactly what's going to happen whenever we have something like this and tractor-trailer sitting out there waiting to turn in because somebody didn't move or something didn't happen. He's waiting to turn in, somebody's going to get into that turning lane, and they're going to end up killing somebody right there. I couldn't tell you how many times I've been out there, and I've been on that scene, guys. Sorry. Secondly, I, I also have got an online petition. I'll be glad to share it with you guys. I've got over 400 online Newton County residents that are against this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name is John Clemmons, and I have stood before you, before, on a similar project on Highway 278 and Social Circle Road. I'm in District 5. I'm against this for the very reason that I was against what was happening out on Social Circle Road. The impact that is happening when you put something of this nature in that area, I, I don't even go over there hardly at all. I don't know anything about it, other than the fact that I can understand why these people are concerned and the impact it's going to have. 138 is not a slow highway, so I can understand their concern for safety as well as other issues, and I just wanted to voice my opinion from the other side of the county. We need to look out for the whole county, not just parts of it. Thank you.
Anyone, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Andrea Berger. I live on Little Haines Drive.
Yep. Keep talking to Mike Ford, please. Thank you.
Okay. So, I wanted to add to a couple of things that were mentioned. First off, we already have an excessive amount of big rigs traveling up and down 138 because we are the main intersection from Highway 78 up in Monroe to where they go up to the Walmart distribution center, all the way down to Highway 20. And when the big rigs come up that hill, where they have that one-tenth of a mile traveling 55 miles an hour, and a big rig is coming out of that parking lot, they will not, I don't care what you say, they will not have that opportunity to stop. Cars, possibly. Big rigs, absolutely not. Now, I did notice that they made a grand gesture with all the landscaping, but you see no satellite photos of the agricultural areas that are surrounding this lot, which do have cows and other animals on these lots that are just marked as vacant. They do have farm animals on those lots, and I noticed that they did not add those lots into the photos, the aerial photos. But we did put a couple of aerial photos as well with the photos that we submitted, so please take a look at those. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Have a minute and 39 seconds left.
My name is Wayne Casey. I live about one-third of a mile off of 138 on Kent Rock, and I'd just like to reiterate what a couple of people have said about the traffic. It is horrendous out there. I've tried to turn many, many times into Kent Rock and sit there sometimes three, four, or five minutes to make my turn. I was so coming out, when I was on my way over here tonight, I probably sat there two minutes to make a left-hand turn because of the traffic coming in both directions, not just one direction. And what everybody has said about the speed on that road, it may be marked 45 to 55, 45 in some areas, 55 in others, but there's a lot of people that go a lot faster than that, and it was, it was pretty reckless driving on that road at times. And I'd just like to reiterate the traffic and safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have 48 seconds left. 48 seconds left.
Dave Norton in New Bern again. In the planning and zoning, one of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission had an issue. The building was labeled as office space. There was nothing in there for repair. The applicant, who needs civics lessons, I guess, he stated he would be doing minor repair, there would be some noise, but the Planning Commission member had an issue because that was not listed in there at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? 20 seconds left. Ms. Applewhite. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I think this is also in District 3. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much. First, I want to applaud the residents of Kent Rock. It is really important to speak up and speak out of the things that you want to see and don't want to see in your community. Sometimes I get told it's a political move, but as, as a commissioner and a representative, it's not political when you're helping your residents. And so, I applaud you for being here and speaking up. And on January 4th, I actually received an email from Mr. Kreps in regards to what was happening, and this was before he even became, came before the Planning Commission. The applicant, well, I don't think he was an applicant then or not. He was laying rock and everything, and didn't have a permit, and I went out there myself, and I took pictures, and I sent it to Planning and Zoning, and I was informed that there were not going to be any more activity, there was a stop work order, so I, I understand where these residents are coming from. If he's not going to obey the law or the ordinance that are put in place, or the, or get a permit to do what he needs to do, then what makes, makes him, makes us know that he's going to do the right thing. So, there was a reason why I did not put a motion to table it, because I heard from the residents, I spoke to them, they've gone through this for four years. They've even said they tried to speak to the applicant before, and as you can see, you saw the list where it was pulled, I think in 2016, correct me if those dates are wrong. So, they've been going through this for a while. And so, the reason why I am going to put a motion now, I'm going to say a motion to deny REZ 2400003, is because these applicants spoke up, spoke out, and the, not the, the resident, and the applicant basically did not hear the residents. They are living in this area, they pay their taxes, and they have a right to speak up on what they would like around their area. Thank you.
There's been a motion made by Commissioner Sanders to deny. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? That motion passed, it's stand denied. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite. Guys.
Thank you, Chairman. So, because the rezoning was denied, we are So because the rezoning was denied, we are not going to move ahead with the companion case. So there's no need to present the conditional use permit.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Because the rezoning was denied, there's no need to move forward with the conditional use permit application at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Petition at this time.
Okay.
So our next petition this evening is also a conditional use permit. It is CUP twenty-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three. It is for a commercial child daycare center. It's located at twenty-six-twenty-six Highway two-twelve. That is a suite number. The parent parcel's address is actually twenty-six-hundred Highway two-twelve. The parcel size is two acres. The tax ID is fifty-one dash six J. The future land use map is a mixed use. The existing zoning is general commercials in the South River watershed, located in Commissioner District One. The owner's listed as A and M Partnership LLC, and our petitioner is Cinnamon Sartan. The applicant's intent is actually to expand their, their existing commercial daycare center into a new building and location in the general commercial zoning district. So in April of twenty-twenty-two, the planning commission approved a cup to locate a daycare in the same parcel but in suites, twenty-six oh-six, twenty-six oh-eight, and twenty-six-ten on Highway two-twelve. And on May seventeenth of twenty-twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners approved that conditional use permit for the daycare. Now they're looking to, the planning commission recommended approval of the new location as well by a vote of four-zero, and this is on March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. So the site contains two acres, zone general commercial, and it is located in an area surrounded by both commercial and residential properties. There are two six thousand square foot commercial buildings on the property. And the new location that they are proposing is in the second building on the property, number twenty-six-twenty-six. And the site plan was submitted to Development Services back in February of this year. And according to the site plan in the letter of intent, the property will be used for a commercial daycare center. The applicant provided us with a survey. The property has a paved entrance and parking lot in front of the building, and the existing building meets or exceeds all the minimum building setbacks per Section two-seven-zero-zero-five-zero-B of the property development standards in our UDO. And the signage will be according to Section five-two-five dash zero-two-zero-D. This is a section that is applicable to a commercial child daycare. It is included in your packets, so I won't read through it. But in conclusion, staff would recommend approval of this conditional use request to expand the commercial daycare center into a new building location with staff recommendations. And should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved. For a conditional use permit, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the board. One, to the owner's agreement, provided by the following development standards. A, limit the number of total occupants per suite to the occupant load as set by the Newton County Fire Marshal. B, provide a copy of the Bright From The Start state license for the subject location to Development Services before any business license can be issued and maintain a Bright From The Start state license while in operation. C, provide a sprinkler inspection to the Newton County Fire Marshal, and the inspection must be approved prior to the release of a business license. D, prior to the release of the business license, provide a copy of an approved fire inspection from Newton County Fire Marshal to Development Services and complete an annual fire inspection from the Newton County Fire Services. E, maintain compliance with Section five-ten dash two-ten of the Newton County zoning ordinance. F, prior to any construction, addition, or removal of walls within the suite, the applicant must apply for required building permits. And G, must have an approved play area with a four-foot tall fence before the issuance of a business license. So this is the current location of the property. We have the two buildings here. This is the play area they have that is enclosed. The current daycare is located in three suites in this building. They're looking to move to, to expand it into a full suite on this side. It is currently zoned, a general commercial. It's in the mixed-use flume, located in the South River watershed. We have a survey of the property. And this is the suite location where they're going to be moving to, and currently they are in these three over here. And we have a current play area as well for the children. And these are just photos of inside a new building that they're looking to move to as provided by the applicant. And this is a public hearing, Chairman. Ever any questions for staff?
Thank you so much. We're gonna open it up now for our public hearing. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time. State your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Cinnamon Sartan, and I stand before you to explain my intentions of acquiring this space at twenty-six-twenty-six twelve, Highway two-twelve, Covington, Georgia. My husband and I are currently owners of Cinnamon Tenderhearts Daycare, which approximately cares for forty-eight children on a daily basis. We are looking to use this space to increase our capacity with our business. The daycare capacity met enrollment of three months of being established. We currently care for children in Newton County, but we would also like to service Henry County as well. It has been an absolute pleasure to be such a part of a growing community. The current space that we are acquiring about is three hundred square feet. It's, no, I'm sorry, three thousand square feet that we currently have at twenty-six oh-eight Highway two-twelve. The space that we are intending to inquire will be a thousand square feet, which will allow for a total of four thousand square feet. I have children that attended Newton County High School and all Newton County, both Newton County elementary schools. We love doing what we do. I couldn't see myself doing anything else. I can honestly say that I have grown an attachment to every child that I care for currently. I offer a daily curriculum, I offer a rigorous schedule and activities. I try to make sure that each child, I meet their academic needs emotionally as well as academically. My plan is to expand my daycare so that I can also become a bigger part of Newton County Business Association as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Applewhite. I think this is in District One, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve with staff recommendations can you, conditional use permit two-four dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Discussion, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Applewhite, so a couple of questions. If, if this were to be approved and the business were to pull out at some point a year from now, this conditional use permit would not be transferable, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, one other, another question. So I'm familiar with this little complex here. Is this building, the building to be used, is it, is it in the same, is it parallel to two-twelve or perpendicular to two-twelve that the building she, she wants to use?
This one would be parallel to two-twelve. It's two-twelve here. Yeah, so this is the building here.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five votes. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next item is an ordinance amendment. Last December, Development Services had a town hall meeting with our builders and developers. And a topic of concern to them was how we currently permit, that we do temporary permits while they're building their homes. So basically, they get a temp pole, and that is what they have to use, you know, while on the construction. And there was a heavy demand and requests to move more to the temp perm system of permitting. Basically, this allows them to have at least one breaker per floor in the actual home while they're building. And this is a prefer, they do prefer this. It helps them to, the easy access to the electricity and to perform the functions that they have to do in the home, whether it's the cosmetic issues or, you know, the actual usage of the equipment and so on. Other counties currently use this method. We did a long time ago, but we had switched to the temporary pole method because there was an issue with builders coming back for their COs. We no longer have that issue now, because I think the mortgage associations, the banks and the lenders, they are demanding those COs, so they have to come back and get them.
Hold on one second.
So we are comfortable at this time, you know, going back to that system. So this ordinance, this is an amendment to the Newton County Permit Administrative Procedures Control Ordinance. And this basically lays out the requirements for things related to buildings, such as their inspections and permits and, you know, what they need to do. And the section we're looking at is Section Eight, which covers inspections. And we have added Section eight point three point one, which is a temporary power request. And this states that it shall be the duty of the person doing the work authorized by a permit to request for a temporary power connection once the building has sheet rock installed. Each building is allocated one temporary power circuit per floor. The temporary power requests are subject to the approval of the Director of Development Services. Prior to requesting a temporary power connection, A, all electrical, electrical covers shall be installed and labeled. B, a maximum of one-twenty amp GFI circuit breaker shall be installed per floor in the panel box. All other extra slots shall be covered with a blank. C, any breakers installed shall have their circuits labeled. D, ground rods or the euphr shall be installed for surface grounding. E, unless otherwise specified, it shall be the duty of the contractor or the homeowner to ensure that a third-party inspection is completed and a written report provided to the county. And F, upon a satisfactory inspection or inspection report, the county shall release the power. So this is a section that staff is proposing to add, and that would adequately address the concerns of builders and developers while working on their homes. And this is a public hearing, Chairman. If there's any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna open it up now for our public hearing. Those that would like to speak in favor, if you would, please come up now and state your name, your address for the record, please. You have ten minutes to do so. Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Have ten minutes to do so. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight, Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please? Thank you so much. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Amendment two-four dash zero-zero-one-one of Ordinance zero-four-zero-two-two-four, an ordinance to amend the two thousand fourteen Permit Administrative Procedures Control Ordinance Section Eight inspections.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Cowell. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Builders, oh, I had some builders that were questioning this because when they were building the building, they didn't have lights. So it was a certain point of time they were able to get lights. And so this is gonna correct that issue, correct? They can get it a little bit earlier than norm?
Yes, this will address, it will have, you know, some power to the building now itself. Instead of using the temp pole that is outside, it'll actually be in the building itself. Which will have all the breakers active.
Perfect, okay.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes five votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
So the, the next three items on the agenda for Development Services, and they're all related. So we're going to start off, over the past year and a half, the county, we have administered services of Ross and Associates to assist us with updating our CIE report, which is the capital improvement element, as well as our impact fee ordinance. And Ms. Ross, this is gonna be our first public hearing for, we're gonna start off with a CIE report. He's gonna just give a brief overview of that. This is discussed at the work session that we had as well. And then we're gonna look at the CIE short-term work program, the annual update. Those two documents, we are asking tonight for approval. It's for them to be transmitted to DCA for review, so they can begin that sixty-day period. And then we're going to look at the actual impact fee ordinance and the fee schedule as a third item. So I'm just gonna have Mr. Ross step in briefly to go over the CIE report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not here to rezone anything. As you know, we've been working diligently, the staff and I together, on updating your impact fee program. At the same time, of course, you also have your annual CIE update reports every year, and, and that is also before you. I'm gonna give you an overview of the impact fee process and where we are in that process. As you know, a methodology report has already been prepared. We've presented that a while back. And that, that document is the sort of overview of everything about impact fees in this update. A capital improvements element has been created, and it's before you tonight to be forwarded to the region, ARC, and then on to DCA for the, for the standard two-month review process. We have also drafted an impact fee ordinance. The county attorney has it under review. And I believe we're gonna, this is a public hearing on the ordinance, too?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, yes. And, and two public hearings are required to adopt the ordinance. The key, however, is you need to adopt the new CIE first because that enables you to adopt the ordinance. Now, there's some, just not disagreement, some feel that you can go ahead and adopt the ordinance anyway because you are an impact fee community. So I'm gonna leave that to the county attorney to thread through. But that's where we are in terms of the ordinance. It's been drafted and is under, excuse me, is under review. And it's an update to the ordinance you already have. This is an overview of the whole process. Methodology report's been done. Capital improvements element is before you now. And with your approval, it'll be sent on to ARC and then to DCA for that two-month review period. During this time, as I said, the impact fee ordinance has been drafted and is under review, and it will be fleshed out, if you will. So that, once the CIE has been reviewed and approved by DCA, you can adopt the CIE and in turn adopt the revised ordinance at that time. And a key thing about the ordinance is, that's where the impact fee schedule is. And that's what we're still working with you on of what, what are the new fees that you will want to adopt. We don't have to take sixty days to figure that out, but we have plenty of time to finalize on that. And I think we've made a lot of inroads with you all already on getting your, your input on that. That CIE, the capital improvement elements, it includes the forecast of population and housing. In other words, in the next twenty years, what do we expect growth to be? That growth is gonna create needs for system improvements in the future in order to maintain the current level of service. You don't want your level of service to go down as growth goes up. You want them to go together, and that's what impact fees are. You want them to go together, and that's what impact fees are, are all about. Uh, the Community Work Program, which is a part of the, uh, the, uh, CIE, um, it, uh, it's, it's a projection of five years. You've done annual updates every year for quite a while. You know what a community work program is. There's one in your comprehensive plan also, and they all interrelate, if you will. Now, while the CIE is under review, um, we, we, we will be working with you to focus on the impact fee schedule. What do you really want to charge? We tell you what the maximum is because the law says you can't charge too much. So our initial job is to tell you what's too much. You can't go beyond. But you can certainly adopt lower fees than the maximum. That's up to y'all, and we'll work with you on, on coming up with, with what you ultimately want to do. Because as I said, that goes in the ordinance and gets adopted at the end of the, the schedule. Also, there are many ways to reduce impact fees. You have an impact fee ordinance already. Um, but number one, as I said, you can adopt a fee schedule lower than the maximum. Most communities do, some didn't. Um, there, it includes information about individual fee assessments. Somebody comes in and says, I'm not in the book. My use isn't there. What do I do? Well, we can do an individual fee assessment. There's a process for that to come up with a, a fair fee for, for that particular use. Um, there's an appeals process in there. If somebody wants to appeal their impact fee, they can do it for any reason, for any reason. My grandmother has an operation, and I don't have the money to pay for that and my impact fee, whatever it might be. Uh, the appeals process actually has been enhanced quite a bit in the draft ordinance that's, that, that has been prepared. Um, there's also provisions for credits for development, developer agreements with you. If, um, I'll do, I'll, I'll pave that road if you'll give me a curb cut. Whatever kind of developer agreement involved in the impact fees is possible, that's also enabled in the ordinance. And there are also exemptions. The state law has two potential exemptions. One is for extraordinary economic or employment growth, and the other is for affordable housing. These are optional. They're enabled in the ordinance. They're enabled, but in order to apply or to have either of those kinds of exemptions, you would then need to adopt definitions, specifics. What are, what, what is extraordinary economic development? Uh, you need to define it, and how much of a, an exemption, which is a reduction in the fee, would you allow? You don't have to adopt any exemptions. They're empowered by the law, and so they're empowered in your ordinance, but they're not effectuated, if that's a, if that's a real word. You would have to actually adopt the standards, the guidelines, et cetera, in a separate action in order to apply those, those exemptions or make them, make them available. Um, there is a catch twenty-two with exemptions. Under the state law, every dollar you might exempt a use from the impact fees, you have to make that dollar up in the impact fee accounts. So it's pretty serious business. Somebody is really gonna have to, uh, if you want an exemption, they're really gonna have to prove their case because in essence, the people in the county, through their taxes, through you, are gonna pay for that exemption in the reduction from the, from the impact fees. Um, quick, uh, lesson number one, how do we even calculate the impact fees? This question came up a while, a while back. Um, the, the methodology report for each category, parks and recreation, fire, et cetera, there's an inventory of what capital items do you already have? Land, vehicles, buildings, et cetera. Uh, what is the service area, population, housing units and employees? Uh, just about everything is countywide in its, uh, uh, service area. Uh, some, it's only unincorporated plus the small cities, et cetera. It varies from use to use. Um, but you divide the capital items you've already got, the buildings, the fire trucks, the sheriff's vehicles, whatever, you divide that by the so-called service area population. How many people in the county right now getting that service? That establishes the level of service. There may be point zero 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 four three fire engines per household. Um, but the reason we calculate this, this level of service is because we then apply that to the future growth. You wanna maintain your level of service. You don't want your services to go down while more and more people and more and more businesses are moving into the, into the county. So, um, so we multiply that level of service times the future population or households. It varies from chapter to chapter. Uh, but you multiply that, that, through the, times future growth to figure out, okay, how many more fire trucks are we going to need? Uh, how many more acres of park are we gonna need in order to maintain the level of service we've got today as the county grows? And that ends up being the impact fee. It may be per person, it may be per housing unit. Again, it varies depending on the kind of facility from chapter to chapter. Uh, this is a quick example of library buildings. You can see we started off with how many square feet of floor area is in there? Uh, what does, uh, the level of service per housing unit come to? Multiply that, that, uh, number of, uh, floor area times the future um, uh, population to get, um, how many more new square feet are we gonna need? And using a per square foot cost, what's it gonna, how much will it cost you to, to provide those facilities? Uh, this was a, a table, I think we supplied it a while back. Uh, up and down the left-hand side are some nearby cities and counties. Uh, you could sort of call this your, your, your market area. Uh, the asterisks indicate that those three communities are updating their impact fee programs right now. So the numbers you see in that first column, those are the fees that, that those various communities are charging today. Uh, some of these, as I say, are gonna go up. And then we compare that. Each of those columns is how does the Newton County fees compare to those particular cities? Uh, there are, of course, like fifty, fifty cities and counties out there that have impact fees, but we focus on your, your area. We said, you know, your, your maximum fee for a single family house is little over eighty-seven hundred dollars. We then looked at what's, what's twenty percent of that, thirty percent, forty, sixty percent? Uh, if, if you adopted the county's fees at one of those percentages, that's, that's how they would compare to those cities. I threw in the fifty-one point oh seven percent, a strange number. But, um, that fee, excuse me, four thousand four hundred and sixty dollars per single family home is one percent, one percent of what new houses are selling for in the county today. Now, some are more, some are less, but that was just the, just the average. So that's, that is not a proposal on my part, but quite often the question comes up, would it, would it be at, at one percent? Um, so, um, transmit the CIE starting tonight. During that sixty days, we will finalize and work with you on the ordinance and the, and the county attorney. Um, and leading up to adopting, when we get the CIE back from review, we can adopt the CIE and at the same time, right after, adopt the, adopt the ordinance at that time. And that ordinance will have the impact fee schedule in it that you want to, you want to adopt.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Applewhite, you have anything before we open up to the public?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you, Chairman. Um, I wonder if I should go ahead and do the CIE stop work order because we're gonna transmit these two together with the same resolution.
Okay.
And then we can open them up for public hearing.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is our annual CIE or Capital Improvement Element update, along with our financial report and the Short Term Work Program update. Uh, but you do have this, you have a copy of this in your packet. It's a little hard to read it up here. But these are the projects that were provided by the various departments. Um, while we updated our, we did an updated CIE report and program, we have added new departments to be eligible to receive impact fees. And so some of their projects are here. It includes fire and EMS. We also added animal services and of course, the sheriff's office. So these are the projects that were provided. Some of them are eligible for impact fee funding. Um, some of them are eligible for the SPOS and, you know, other sources of funding. So we're just gonna, um, flip through. And currently, they're either undergoing or they're postponed until, um, funding is available. These are the criteria that DCA wants us to use when classifying the status of the projects or they're completed. And the ones in green were all completed. So that's why they're highlighted in green. So we have our roads department, and these are their, some of their projects that are eligible for impact fees for some of the funding, as well as other sources. We have the library as well. We've got a couple that are completed and still one that is pending available funds. This is the parks and recreation, and the director for that department actually submitted it by, largely by district, like where the projects are located. And, um, some of them are underway. Like in this column here, that some of them are still pending funds. But they are all eligible for impact fee funding. This is animal services, so they have got vehicles that they need. And we have the approximate costs, um, and of course, they're pending funding as we get the impact fees coming in. And then we have fire services and some of their projects. And then this is the financial report for June, as of June twenty twenty-three, and it shows that the impact fees balance we have, is it four? It's a hard number to read. Looks about four million. And then the fees encumbered, we have one point five three four that we can use. Are there any questions on this report?
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, so the request tonight would be for us to transmit these two to DCA for review.
Okay.
The CIE and the Short Term Work Program update.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna open it up now for our public hearing. We're gonna open up now for our public hearing. Uh, it's, we allow ten minutes for those that wanna speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to...
So this will be a little different.
Let's explain it to the public.
This is, this, this public hearing isn't necessarily for and against. It's just a public hearing to hear from the citizens as to their comments related to the impact fee or the CIE, the Short Term Work Program.
We still have ten minutes, sir. If you would, please come on up.
Dave Norton of New Bern again. Uh, the charts and info that's being presented up here, will it be available to the public without having to do a, uh, information request? Will it be available online so that the general public can review it before actual public hearing on it? Uh, also, I would like to ask the commissioners to pay close attention to the exemption sections. Uh, I know that the Development Authority can pretty much do what they want. Uh, I just don't wanna see it a, this guy gets a exemption, this guy doesn't, depending on who does what. Uh, corporations get tax exemptions, and then the small businessman does it. Uh, also, there was, I seen on the planning and zoning, it mentioned hotel rooms was like twenty-two dollars a room on the impact fee, somewhere in that chart. And then the warehouse was eleven cents a square foot, I believe it was. Uh, the warehouse, to me, the warehouse pays or does very little for the county, but does definitely have an impact. They provide a few jobs, whereas a hotel room, tourism is big in this county right now. Uh, so we need to look at that also. There was another one. I can't remember it right now. But yes, I, I would like to see that this is all available to the public so that we can try to understand it. A lot of it's over my head, but I can't learn if I can't see it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Ms. Applewhite.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And, um, just as a reminder, this is only the first public hearing. So there will be another public hearing and opportunities for citizens, of course, to review. We can put it on our website.
Thank you.
And the request tonight is to, uh, request the board approve it or transmit it to DCA.
Thank you, ma'am. I seek a motion, please?
For a motion.
Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Cowell. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five vote. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman. And the other part of this, uh, we actually updated our ordinance as well, our Development Impact Fee Ordinance. And this, as Mr. Ross says, has the fee schedule attached to it in Appendix A. Um, we provided a copy of the red lines to you as well as a clean copy. So I won't go through every page of that, but just to note some of the major changes that we did. Of course, we updated the language. Uh, we've added new sections and of course, just shift some sections around. So I'm just gonna focus on those for now. So a new section we added, for example, section thirty-four dash thirty-four, which is the fee assessment and payment. So it addresses the administrative appeals process, um, you know, how to file the appeal, how the process works. You know, the boards it has to go before, so this is what this section would address. And again, this is also included in your packet. We, we remove section, um, it was previously section thirty-four dash three seven, it's now thirty-four dash three five. And this addresses exemptions. So it looks at the exemption policy, you know, how, how we determine what can be exempted and how that is dealt with or addressed. Um, you know, how you can do the request for approval of exemptions, you know, from the impact fee process and so on. A new section we added addresses refunds. It will be section thirty-four dash three eight. And so in the event that we have to, you know, refund an impact fee, basically if the building hasn't been built in, I think in about six years, it is eligible, you know, to be refunded as, as an example. Um, so this section addresses the process and how one can go about doing that. And then, of course, we have section thirty-four forty, which is, addresses the periodic review and amendments. You know, as shown above. And this is just part of that section too. Right, and then the other big amendment that we did was the actual fee schedule, which is found in Appendix A of the ordinance. And as Mr. Ross was saying earlier, the state does allow a maximum, and this is just a sample at a hundred percent, what, you know, the impact fees would look like. So for example, for a single family... So for example, for a single family home, it would be eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars if we were to charge a hundred percent impact fees. And it just goes down, for examples, for apartments, warehouses and so on, they have the different fees. If we, you know, forty percent, it'll be thirty-four ninety-three for a single family home, for example, if we were to do it that way. An apartment would be thirty ninety-seven. We added a thirty percent slide at the planning commission. They were interested in seeing what thirty percent would look like. They actually did not make a recommendation to forward it, which is fine because the, this board will actually make the final decision. But they were interested in what thirty percent would look like. Some of them were undecided at the time, they needed more information, but this is what they were proposing. And of course, you have the comparison chart that Mr. Ross showed earlier. So these are, you know, the, surrounding jurisdictions, you know, McDonald, Henry County, Spalding County, Rockdale, City of Covington. And staff would actually recommend as a starting point, the forty percent bracket. Because currently we're charging one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents for a single family, for example. Townhomes are about thirteen hundred dollars per unit right now. So, you know, we would recommend, you know, forty to fifty percent bracket, but you know, forty percent would be a reasonable starting point to cover, especially since we've added three new departments as well to be eligible for the impact fees. And yeah, so that would be, and you know, so again, this is just our first hearing for the impact fee ordinance, so I don't know, we have to make a firm decision tonight. But we thought would also recommend that it become active thirty days out so that we have time to adjust and, you know, prepare, because we have to calculate these fees. So I've got to get staff in place and software and so on. But that would be our recommendations for the impact fee ordinance and fees. And if there are any questions, I just, these are just auto slides, but if there are any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So let us get, let us, let us get a motion on the floor.
And this is a public hearing, so.
You want to, okay, we'll do it as a pub here. So I'm going to let Commissioner Sanders ask you a question before we go into the public here.
Question that I have is that the impact fees that we currently collect, you don't see an impact in the areas that need the impact fees and the ones that are producing the impact fees. I would hope that when we pass this, it's going to increase from seventeen hundred dollars per home that's being built to thirty-four hundred. That where those impacts are, fees are being produced, that it's going back into that community to build some, some green space or some parks and recreation. That it's building a library in the dense areas that need libraries. So I don't see the funding going back to the areas that produce majority of the impact fees. So that is my issue with impact fees and I've heard, I've heard that a lot from a lot of residents. I know right, all this information is probably going over a lot of individuals' heads. So we probably need a workshop to teach our residents on how to read these charts and what impact fees are about. Because a lot of residents, like he said, it's going over their head because they hadn't had the information until tonight. So that would be my whole plight to this board is that we make sure that the impact fees are definitely going back into, at least a certain percentage of the money is going back into those areas that has that density of houses. And they see the benefit from paying impact fees.
Yes, ma'am. From my understanding of how the impact fees work is that it goes to the projects that are identified. For example, in the C I E, in the short term work program report, perhaps Mr. Ross can expand a bit on that, how they're allocated. But I believe there are, there are specific projects as opposed to a location.
Because I was talking to a developer out of Gwinnett, he actually developed here as well. And he said in Gwinnett, I know we can't compare Gwinnett to Newt because they're a lot larger than we are. And how Gwinnett works is if that area is producing that impact fee, they make sure that that area is be able to see, reaping the benefits from it, basically. They're able to see the money being spent back into that area that's producing majority of the fees. I don't see that in Newt. I, I don't see it.
The votes who are going to determine where this money gets spent are y'all.
Right.
Not us. The only thing we can tell you is here's how much you can charge. We don't tell you where to spend it. In the annual budgeting process, that's the perfect time to say, now wait a minute, we've got some impact fees in the pot. We need to put a fire station over here. That's where that regionalization, regionalization actually happens in the budgeting process. You got the pot of money, now where are you going to spend it? And that's y'all.
Thanks, thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Well, thank you, C. Well, you know, I, I, I've had a honest, at least I thought I had a understanding of impact fees and I thought that where is the community that, that is most impacted by all this growth? And I know a few years ago, we did recreational projects. And it seemed to me it never did kind of help out some areas such as, I think, District Two and District Three and especially District Three. And for the recreational, and, and I'm trying to understand if, if, if they're growing, those areas, those districts are growing. Then I believe that impact fee money should be spent in those areas, especially for those communities. And as far as I can see, it seems like they're not, and I think there, there should be, and at some point, there will be a discussion on how we can count them. Make sure that everybody get a, who deserve a piece of the pie.
Thank you, we're going to open it up now for the public hearing. We allow those that want to come up and speak, you have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to come up? Anyone want to make a comment? Anyone want to make a comment? Thank you, Ms. Applewhite. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, we, we, we don't approve the ordinance tonight, we have to have two public hearings. So what will happen is after we transmit the capital improvements element of the short term work program, we get that back. We will then have the second public hearing and approve both this ordinance and the, the actual short term work.
That's before we send it to D C A?
No, we send it, we send the short term work program, you've authorized that to be transmitted. So they will approve it, they will review and hopefully approve it. When it comes back, you will formally adopt it. And after, and, and so it'll be like agenda item ten, and agenda item eleven will be, after a public hearing, will be the approval of the impact fee ordinance and the rate. So you're going to have some time to digest this and, and it'll be made available to the public and the public have time to digest it. And there'll be another public hearing before you vote.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
I think that concludes our items tonight.
Thank you. Guys, we're going to go back for the sake of time tonight, we're going to start with the chairman's report. Max Smith is huge, if you would please come on up, please.
Good evening Commissioners and thank you Chairman Baines. We continue to visit local community nonprofit organizations to shed light and bring awareness on useful resources available in Newton County. Tonight, you will hear from the Community Arts Association. They received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA nonprofit grant funds. Please welcome Ms. Ivy Bond, Ms. Abigail Coggins and Ms. Nala McCamey.
Greetings, greetings.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ivy Bond and I'm the Director of Development and Community Relations at the Arts Association in Newton County. Thank you Board for allowing us here to update you tonight and thank you Chairman Baines, Manager Cooper, Waka and Brian for coming to visit us a couple of weeks ago at Porter Auditorium. Our mission at the Arts Association is to encourage youth and adults in the community to participate in the arts, both as audience and artists. And we never turn away a child from participating, no matter their financial situation. We were so thankful to be awarded ARPA relief funds. Our focus area of use for the funds was to provide performing arts education for students in our area. The funds were poured straight into our programs and immediately helped us pay our artistic instructors for our summer camps. Acting intensives, acting camp junior, Monday morning movement, dance around the world, Broadway every day, musical theater camp and more. Then the fall, the funds supplemented the salaries of our school year programs. Covington Regional Ballet, Newton County Youth Strings, Oxford Singing Children, Oxford Youth Singers and Theater Covington, enabling our programs to continue on and grow. Just like many other nonprofits, in many ways, our organization is still sick with COVID. Having lost donated revenue and participants in our programs, which means a reduction in fees and a loss of income. However, we are slowly getting better. The joy of our over fifty kids and Oxford Youth Singers and Oxford Acting Company presenting the musical Cinderella this past weekend, solidified the renewed strength we are gathering for our choral and musical theater programs. We continue to present world-class artistry via Covington Regional Ballet and our annual Nutcracker Performance. And this year, we partnered with the professional contemporary ballet company, Kit Modus, to present a sold-out performance at Oxford College. Of course, the cost around these programs is ever increasing as we see rising inflation leads with more requests for financial assistance from families wishing for their children to participate in our programs. Therefore, the need of funds to sustain our programming is ever constant and that is why county support through our allocated ARPA funds was so important to us. As said before, we are getting better and the community support shows through our partnerships. The city of Covington continued their support of our organization by partnering with us to present free community concerts on the square and at Legion Field. In a few weeks, the Newton County Community Band will perform their annual sounds of spring at the historic Porter Dale Gym. Porter Dale's local government has expressed their desire to partner with the Arts Association to hold more events there in the near future. And the Newton County School System continues their support of our LEAP initiative, learning enrichment through the arts project. As you can see, the renewed energy is catching and we are excited to be leading the narrative. Last year, we saw an audience size of over twenty-five thousand attendees at our various free community events. Over five thousand students in the Newton County School System walked through the doors at Porter Auditorium to attend free in-school performances. We had over five hundred students participate in our school year and summer arts programs. However, we saw a financial aid increase of over a hundred fifteen percent and we never once turned away a child. We believe that the arts enrich the fabric of a community, contributing to its cultural vibrancy, social cohesion and overall quality of life. They play a vital role in shaping individual and collective identities, fostering creativity and empathy and inspiring positive change. We want to thank the Board of Commissioners for believing in our mission and supporting us, not just with funding, but through participation in and commitment to the promise of a vibrant arts community going forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys, thank you so much for being here and thank you for what you're doing in the community for our, for our youth. And thank you for partnering with the Board of Commissioners.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I just want to take a quick opportunity to thank all that came out for the state and the county. It was a, it was a great turnout, great success and thank you guys so much for your attendance. Now the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members, residents of the community. I come before you today with the county manager's report. We're going to focus on the second P today, our purpose, which is optimum service delivery. We're going to also talk about a S P L O S project, in particular, a capital outlay plan known as Nelson Heights Improvements. Project number S twenty-three thirteen. It's a tier-two project that's currently active. I want to put in perspective a timeline of where we are and where we've been in relationship to this project. In April and May of twenty twenty-two, documents were submitted outlining improvements to Nelson Heights. July sixth, there was a special call meeting related to the twenty twenty-three S P L O S. July twelfth, there was a Board of Commissioners July meeting. And August second, a resolution passed unanimously regarding a referendum S P L O S regarding this capital outlay along with thirteen other projects, excuse me. Let's talk about the correspondence associated with the center improvements. Initially, this document was submitted, it was a summary sheet for the improvements in which a request was made for four point five million dollars. As you could see, the project costs ranged from design fees to project management configuration fees adding up to four point five million. Here's a project summary sheet written in manuscript that identifies the project name, Nelson Heights Community Center Concept Plan, the physical address, identifying the Newton County Board of Commissioners as the property owner, the district in which it resides in. For the total S P L O S request on this document was three million one hundred thousand dollars as written. And our, the contact person was Commissioner Henderson and the project classification was quality of life. When you look at the pricing associated with the community center concept plan, there were eight items identified. There was a football field and soccer track, one point five million. There was an additional parking. There was an error here, they typed in five hundred million, but the actual S P L O S project manager suggested that a correction be made. And the parking cost was actually five hundred thousand. They wanted landscaping at a hundred thousand, upgrades to the security system, a hundred thousand, fencing, two hundred and fifty thousand. Flooring, a hundred thousand, restroom and concession stands upkeep, two hundred and fifty thousand. And then they wanted a trail around the property for four hundred thousand. This was submitted as a request in terms of the improvements associated with this. As I stated, there was a special call meeting July sixth. And there were some quotes from various commissioners in relationship to this project. The first quote that I'm going to reference is at the forty-four minute forty-second mark where Commissioner Henderson stated the following. I know we had talked a little bit about the Cousins project and also the Nelson Heights project. Cousins, we walked it and we said we were going to put it on the S P L O S. One thing I do do is keep my word and maybe all I have is my word. I'm going to keep that. He continued at the forty-five minute thirty-second mark. Let's make sure these projects we have done already committed to, we know we committed to Cousins and we know we committed to Nelson Heights seventeen years ago. At the forty-six minute mark, he stated, it's hard for me to turn the page on that I already believe we've committed to. My words is my bond, even if sometimes it's hard for me to stick to it in spite of. That's kind of where I'm standing on, is that we had a commitment of at least eight mil for Cousins. And last estimate I got from Nelson Heights was five million at one point one million. I think there should be a discussion on funding those projects. I would like the commitment to those projects and if we have to bond, I think we need to. I look at most of these projects on this list, I don't believe it will pass because you don't have enough on it, what I think the citizens want. Comments continued at the one hour eight minute and thirty-second mark by Commissioner Henderson. Then we went back to Nelson Heights because that is something that I had asked for before the S P L O S committee. Explained to them that seventeen years we were going to do something, add on fields or something because they moved us. The total, when I talked to rec department, he said the cost was five million to do what we wanted to do up there. From the room to football fields, to soccer fields, slash track field, that would be used by the rec. That was a total of thirteen million. Cousins and Nelson Heights in parentheses. Put on the ballot, let the citizens decide on that particular issue. That is what it's going to boil down to if citizens voted up or voted down. At the one hour forty-six minute thirty-six second mark, Commissioner Henderson stated the following. How can we get this list that we have here to add ten million for Cousins and additional one million for Nelson Heights? How can we fund all these projects? I think all of them are important to the citizens of Newton County. Here is video footage of that discussion that was just referenced.
I know we had, we had talked a little bit, I think prior to, about the Cousin project and also about the Nelson Heights project. We walked the Cousin when we purchased it, one point five million. We walked it and we said that we were going to put it on the S P L O S. One thing I do do is I keep my word. And maybe that's all I have is my word, so I'm, I'm going to keep that. Said, let's do these projects that we have, or make sure that they are done, that we have already committed to. have already committed to." Now, we know we committed to Aurora Cousin. We know we committed to Nelson Heights years ago, seventeen years ago. It's hard for me to turn the page on something that we've already, or that I believe that we committed to. I guess I'm a form believer that my word is my bond, and I have to kind of stick to it in spite of, and that's kind of where, you know, I'm standing on, is that, is that we had a commitment for at least that eight million for Cousin, and the last estimate I got for Nelson Heights, it was five million, and I think at one point, it was a million dollars on that. I think that should be a discussion on funding those projects. I would like for this board to honor their commitment to their projects and those projects. And if we had to, if we have to rearrange, if we had to borrow some money, I think there was one avenue, I think we need to, because as I looked at most of these projects on this list, I don't think, but I don't believe it'll pass because you don't have enough on it, what I think the citizens want. And then we went back to Nelson Heights because there was something that I had put on, asked for before the Splatge Committee. Explain to them that seventeen years, they were going to do something, add on the field and stuff, because they moved us to up that way, to add on the field, and I think it was told when I talked to the Rec Department, Dwayne, he was saying that the cost factors, he said it was five million dollars to do what we wanted to do over there, from the room to the football field, slash soccer field, slash track field, that would be used by So this is where we was at. So it was a total of, what, eight, what, thirteen million? Let the citizens put on the ballot, let the citizens decide on that particular issue. And that's where it really boiled down to, whether the citizens want to vote it up or vote it down. How can we get all these projects, this list that we have here, this list, plus, I think, to edit, I think, ten million for Cousin and the additional one million for Nelson Heights? How can we fund those, all of these projects? Because I think all of them is very important to the citizens of Newton County. How can we?
A follow-up meeting on July 12th, where there was an interactive conversation between Chairman Bain as well as Commissioner Henderson, and at the thirty-nine minute, fifty-eight second mark, Chairman Bain, enlisting the project, stated the following. "You want Nelson Heights Community Center? We've got that on here. We've got things that you guys asked us to put on here." Chairman Bain continued at the forty minute, fifty-five second mark. "Commissioner Henderson has Nelson Heights Community Center that's, that he's building, that he's been building for." Commissioner Henderson's response, seventeen years. Commissioner Bain's, "And he got his basketball courts a year." Video from the July 12th meeting.
We got Nelson Heights Community Center. You guys wanted that on here. We got Washington Street. We got CID. We got the things that you guys asked us to put on here. Commissioner Henderson has Nelson Heights Community Center that he's been building for, I'm not sure, Commissioner Henderson, how long? A while, a long while, and he just got his...
Seventeen years.
How long?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years? And he just got his, how, how, how long have you had your basketball courts?
About a year.
About a year.
So the crux of the matter to this whole situation transpired on August 2nd, 2022, and it was pretty much the pinnacle when we talk about the resolution piece. There was a referendum resolution approved by the board, authorizing a levy of a one percent Splatge, and outlined how the collections would be distributed amongst municipalities as well as the capital outlay projects. There were fifteen outlay projects. As you can see, Nelson Heights Improvements is the thirteenth at one million dollars. This resolution passed unanimously, five zero, on August 2nd, 2022. That's just a photo of the, oh, excuse me, that's a...
Any more discussion? All in favor? If I have five of them, thank you so much.
So I brought this to the attention of the board because I know that there's going to be a discussion, I think item number ten, about the Nelson Heights Splatge funding. So this referendum has been approved, and with it being approved, it's been identified as a Tier Two project, and this is just to lay some context to the discussion that's soon coming. I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. I had thought that we were going to discuss this on item number ten. I didn't understand that there was some kind of video display of me asking for support from the Commissioners for District, a piece of District Four, talking about the Aurora Cousin renovation and about Nelson Heights. I just want to add one thing, and I think we had this in, Mr. Cooper, when you came to a meeting that we had over at TK Adams Building, you know, the building where the sign of Mr. TK Adams, who is a, him and Miss Adams, who is a pillar in our community is, was taken down by the county and then placed on the side of the building, we had this meeting. What you did mention was that the proposal for Nelson Heights, it was discussed with myself there and Anthony Henderson at the time, we were running Nelson Heights, about the improvements. And the Splatge Committee, which I think was, I can't think of just right offhand, who were on it, we discussed it, talked to them, explained what we wanted, and they made a determination, and as I told you at that particular meeting, and that determination was to turn it down, the four and a half million, I think, I think four and a half million, three million that we had requested for Nelson Heights. So that was dead. How we ended up with the eight million, and then we have, I mean, just pause right here, we have another discussion on item number ten, was that we came back before this, came back before this board, and it was two items, we were talking about Aurora Cousin, and I give Commissioner Calvin credit, that he stood with Commissioner Sanders and myself, and then the other board commissioner chimed in, was to give, I thought, ten million dollars to Aurora Cousin. Instead, they, when it ended up, it was eight million dollars to Aurora Cousin, which was the original amount to renovate some of the parts over there for it. Now, in the, I can't think where it's, I got it here, but in the, when it appeared on the ballot, it said Nelson Heights. It didn't say Nelson Heights Community Center, as we had requested for, when they turned it down, the Splatge Committee, it said Nelson Heights. And I think maybe, it wasn't a mistake, but I think it was a mistake, from your perspective or my perspective, when I asked Patrick, I called Patrick the county attorney, and I said that the one million dollars that they had allocated for Nelson Heights, I said, "We wanted to know if we could take half of that, and which was supposed to be for an expansion of the building, and spend it on other projects in Nelson Heights." And I went on, at the same meeting that you attended, said that we wanted to replace the TK Adams signage, which nobody hadn't done, repair a leak over at a historic Aurora Cousin in the gym, which we constantly have people going there playing ball, you know, and hopefully stop some of the missing that high-rise floor over there. Do more improvements to the TK Adams Building, which I think the Splatge, I mean, not Splatge, but the, after funding, only gave them eight hundred dollars. We wanted a hundred thousand dollars of that particular money to do that. And then one lady was there, talking about how bad her road was, take another hundred thousand dollars, repair the road. And then last, but not least, at this same particular meeting, we wanted to go to Jamestown, that I can remember, Commissioner Calvin had talked about it a long time ago. He may remember, was to do something, he had that district, to do something over there for those, that community, who we felt like desperately needed something to be done. But like I said, the mistake that maybe, I won't say a mistake, but it seemed to be one, was asking Patrick, could some of that money be deferred to something else? It took him a while to get back to me. I still looked through my note, I mean, my mailbox, and I didn't see where he had replied, and so I guess that's where we at. Let me just say this. I know this is election time, and we all want our friends to win. I want mine to win too as well. But I will not stand up and try to discredit somebody for trying to do something good in the community, that you done cut the lights off, you done, don't have a children, you can't get nowhere to play in the summertime unless we do something, the community do something, those kids not going to have anything to eat. But nobody cares. But maybe J.C. Henderson, and I know Commissioner Sanders cares. The reason why I know she cares, because she's been up there several times when we had it, trying to do something to help the kids, not only in District Four, but District Three as well. Hey, if you want to, if you want to win, and I think most people want to win, I want to win every time I run, and I have won every time for about six terms, but I didn't allow nobody. I didn't try to get somebody to step out front for me, because I'm man enough to tell you myself, I'm not going to fight about it. We'll fight about it at the ballot box. So if you're going to say something about me, hey, if you, if you, if you don't think I have enough courtesy by me being one of the Commissioners, maybe to talk to me before it, you don't have to do no video profile on me. You can just tell me. I can take it. Because my goal is, is to help the citizens of Newton County. I don't care who you are, who you are, and do the best that I can to the best of my ability. In closing, Mr. Chairman, I want to tuck this over a long time. In closing, the eight million dollars for Aurora Cousin wasn't even on it. The Splatge Committee didn't even approve it. But because of Commissioner Calvin, Commissioner Sanders and myself, and the other board chairman, and I give you credit where credit is due, we put it on there to hope to do a little sum over there. And one of the two things, I mentioned two of the things, and I got the list, got the list right here of what we want to do over there, to do something for Almantern. He was a great man. Ran the same district in his lifetime, was for him to be remembered, because nobody else seemed like they wanted to. I didn't want to be in my lifetime that we not remember Almantern. Second thing, a friend of mine, who marched in here, who won the reason why we up in here, as people of color, Forrest Sarge Jr. He won the reason, him and his family, the reason why we up in here, and several others, Johnson and several others, a reason why we up here. I want to remember them. Those students who marched from the historic Aurora Cousin, ran up here, up there in front of the courthouse, who neighbors been nineteen, it wasn't until 1976, people hadn't been that long, Cooper, you wouldn't have been here if it had not been for them. I don't want to forget them. I want them to be remembered, and we as a community, we should want them to be remembered. I would not have nobody going, doing my fighting for me, or asking the citizens to vote for me. I do it for myself. Stop doing other people. Mr. Cooper, this is from J.C. Henderson. Stop doing other people bidding for them and joining together with me. You offered me last beating an olive branch. Where is it? To work together. I want to work with you, and this God knows truth.
Let's do it.
But hey, but we can't do it this way. It's got to be, we sit in your office, we talk, and come to some kind of decision, because I don't think it's the right way. And no other Commissioner, in this closing, should have to go through this stuff that you brought here to me, and just have a discussion, either vote it up or vote it down. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to go ahead and use Chairman's privilege tonight to make this number ten. So I don't know what the ax is tonight, but you may want to go ahead and put it out there, whatever it is tonight, since we already talking about it. Go ahead. Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like for, if she's in office, I didn't, I didn't see her. Ms. Maddie Goggins, will she please come up and bring, come up if she would, please? Is she here? Is Maddie here? Okay, well, here she come. And the reason why I'm asking her to come, because, ask her to come, because I want to pass out the petition, if she would, you could hand it to me.
Ma'am, if you could, can you please approach him, and I take it?
Yeah, give it to, petition. And for Ms. Cooper, it's not against you. I want you to know that. So you want to think, you know, figure out something against me. And the reason why, it's about the community. That's what it's all about. It's about the community of Nelson Heights, Spring Hill, Sand Hill, in town, out of town, all the communities, about our community. And the people in our community have the right, not for somebody who we don't know come up here and want to tell us to do stuff and make up stuff on us, have the right to have a say-so in their community high run. You take our tax dollars, we in town, we pay two tax dollars, taxes, the county tax and we pay our city tax. But what the petition is about is who they want to see up in Nelson Heights community. Now, you know, natural people, they want to see, we want J.C. I said, "No, J.C. is not going to, going to do." We want you to put it there, make a recommendation to the board of Commissioners of who you want to see, maybe run that particular building. Stop having all these old, Ms. Cooper, stop having all these old secretive meetings. Have them open. We can take it. I mean, I'm not going to fall or die. I'm not moving anywhere. This is home for me. This is where I was born and raised at, right here. You know, as an adolescent, just a little bit about me, you talked a little about you one time. I ran from Sand Hill, West Street, through Miss Helen Hall Yard, up to here to Washington School, sometime with holes in the bottom of my shoes, because I knew my grandma wanted me getting an education. And because I was small than some of the kids when I first started, guess what? They wanted to jump on me, and I ran back down the hill. But when I became a man, I stopped running. I stood. And so that's what I'm doing now. I'm standing for that community. I'm standing for Spring Hill, because running is going to be gone, and I might be lifted up there unless I die before we leave, but I'm standing for them. I'm standing for all the parks that I done. The ones over in, I'm standing for the ones that I did at Victoria Station. I'm standing for the ones I did in the town of Oxford. I'm standing for the Denny Dog's Park, this one that we started, when there was, there was no Commissioner of color in there. And I had the opportunity of, guess what? Naming it. So my, my, my question is, so I'd asked, getting back on track, I'd asked Patrick, the county attorney, and we told him, said, "Well, you probably going to have to just go with doing the building." And I don't think I want to do, was to take some of the money and spend it in the community. Let's stop playing like we're going to do something with people, and let's actually do it. So this is what I brought, asking for the board was for, if you're not going to allow some of that money, which you may not be able to allow, according to Patrick, what you said, then add on to the building. Do exactly what the stuff that you talked about, I said, do it, because I said I was man of my word, build on to it. You don't want to... You don't wanna spend none of it in the community for the people who need it. Build on to it, build on, build on to it. It used to be that we didn't have, uh, county managers coming up and, and talking just like they were elected. They used to work with the commissioners. If they handed out an olive branch to me, then they were a man or a woman of that word, and they work with you. So I, I don't know where all this is coming from, I think it politically motivated. You know, sometime when the numbers don't seem to be right, or, you know, stuff like this happened, you wanna discredit somebody. Well, my name is not on the ballot. My name is not on the ballot. I haven't once stood up in that horseshoe, and I'm not talking about you, Mr. Cooper, and said, oh, I don't, uh, they spent fifteen thousand dollars. And it no good anywhere, if, if it was fifteen thousand dollars over several years. I haven't once said, well, you know, they wrote out a contract or lease or something, well, that's all that was written, every time you leased the building out. You had to do a contract and make sure the people didn't tear it up. Well, yeah, you had to do that. Regardless of what people might have said, but I did send a mole over to the community center that, and I think if you ask Ms. Denise Williams, she'll play you a tape where the young lady said that she had talked to all the commissioners. Now, she didn't talk to you, Ms. Cooper, but she had talked to all the commissioners. In fact, she said that she met them over Aura Cousin School, and she told me I couldn't use that. And the reason why the locks were changed on the building, probably went to the sheriff, and he said that we thought she had left, and we changed the locks. And then we found out that there was some abuse going on with some of the kids, because the child, in trying to get help, he sent a tape to my daughter. And we in turn went to the sheriff department and filed it, it with them. So you can say what you wanna say and play, I did this, or say I did that, and that's a lie, I did, we did not. I did not stand up for my community, do what best for my community. And so I think, I guess it's more of a discussion, since I don't think that we can, um, we can change the money, like we thought we could. We asked Patrick, took him so long to get back to me. In fact, prove my point about asking Patrick, how long did it take you to get back to me, Patrick, about that, could we use some of that money for something else?
I, I don't know, but longer than I would have liked it as well.
Okay, so this is what I'm saying, when you go out and seek and ask for information, and sometime you don't get it, you draw a different conclusion. So if I, if, if, if you say that I said a, I told a lie, I'm man of my, not a man of my word, then I say you're not telling the truth, because I'm standing up here this evening saying that, add on to the building. I'm also with this petition saying that, don't just, we're not gonna just put anybody, and I asked that the commissioner don't put anybody, put folks in the community, who knows. Also, when you're dealing with children, you know, when you got up, and I guess you were gonna tell me off the other, other meeting, that was that you have to, you, you have to give a background check. It's the Georgia state law. We had to know that, and everybody up there had a background check that was available for the public. We also know that the building, that, that particular building also in the office space is leaking. I don't think it has been fixed, I don't know, I don't have anything to do with it, there's stuff like that has to be fixed. Just stop taking the underserved areas. Just stop taking the, uh, people in our community, the black community, who we all, who loves everybody, we all work together. We all wanna work with everybody, putting them last, give them only eight hundred dollars and give other people several thousand dollars. Just stop putting them last, and let's, let's wake up, and let's work for the common good of all of us. Everybody in this community deserve a piece of the pie. And I, I, I don't know where you from, or how y'all might do things, but where we do it here in Newton County, we work together. Prime example, Cito Coven, former mayor Steve Horton, we'd have to tell him about the, uh, the, uh, uh, then at, at the born, about the room for the blacks and the room for the whites, they pushed it down. In fact, I was the one who helped start it, I think, in a sense, because we didn't want people to be mistreated. You should be using the restroom that you want, cause I know some people don't wanna hear that, but it's the truth. If I'm telling you the truth, it's the truth. And the same thing about the plantation, that we learned the other night, that the chairman runs, he's over it. There's things that happen to people and stuff like that, that shouldn't have. But how do you make it right? If you say you can make it right, is that you stop taking everybody's money and putting it into it, let it support itself, just like what I've always said, let it support itself. Don't take my money and put it in something that I might not want where I want it to go. Last, the things that we should be working on is about our water. He predicted two thousand, I mean, two thousand thirty, uh, he said two thousand forty-five, that there's gonna be a water shortage, but he didn't mention about if there was a drought. We could be at capacity, we need to be working on that now. Because there are carcinogens in our water, and more than once, one, I thought it was the forever chemical, it's more than one. He said it up here, he said with trace amount, so if there are trace amounts in the water, then how come we can't address it now? Lastly, ethanol oxide. It's blowing straight over the poor folks' community. He bumping getting checks. CNO Board, within, within a, uh, two mile radius, he bumping getting checks. Going automotive, uh, pouring those same similar chemicals, they're going to ground, old plants had a leak, and the chemicals are in the ground. People, we better do something, uh, we better do something, cause we, we are in danger, nobody is really seeing anything. And lastly, the last time we went over there to CNO Board, I went on it too, and most of the commissioners didn't wanna go. Those big old, uh, containers are highly explosive chemicals. It's just a matter of time for somebody to figure that out, and what it could do to our community. We need to work with the sheriff department to do something about it, have a plan in place, cause right now, we don't have nothing. We don't have nothing. So this, the things that me as being the longest-serving commissioner, that really concerns me, is about the safety of all people in Newton County. The air quality, water quality, and things that nobody's talking about, that are very important to us. So, let's work together, Ms. Cooper. Hey, I, hey, I'm reaching out for the olive branch, and whenever you get ready to send it and be truthful about it, let me know, cause I'm ready. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Guys, I seek a motion that we approve the Senator, please. Can I get a second? All in favor? Next is item number eight, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item for discussion and consideration is number eight, presented by Mr. Jeff Prime for Recreation Department. BLC requesting approval to amend task order number eight, the Yellow River Trail.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So this, uh, this request is to provide additional time for us to continue to, to manage the, the Yellow River Trail system project. The project is progressing, uh, but it is taking a little longer, because we are predominantly working with the developers along Crowell Road to do alignments that work within the developments. As part of that, that they are willing to donate easements to us. So it's taking a little longer, but it allows us to then really extend our funds, uh, for other improvements as we report.
Thank you, sir, I seek a motion, please. This is a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Passes five oh. Thank you, sir. Let's move to item number nine, please.
Mr. Chair, we are going to move to number nine. Um, Mr. Jeff Prime and Mr. Duane, I ask for the Recreation Purchasing Requesting Approval Amendment.
Number one, requesting approval of amendment number one for Sports Fields Inc., contractor for City Pond and Turner Lake Softball, and again, this is number nine.
Go ahead, sir.
This is our countywide park improvement project for Splot twenty-three, and this, uh, provides scope to convert five fields over at City Pond to synthetic turf, and also the infield's at Turner Lake Softball Complex. And there also is some reconditioning of some of the sports fields as well. And the, the total amount of the contract would be, uh, for the construction would be two million, seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars. This is well within, uh, what we're seeing for these types of improvements, and, and we recommend it for approval.
Thank you, sir, I'll seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, and it's, 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 um, I thank more to Mr. Duane than, uh, Mr. Prime. I remember all the good years that we had, uh, when my children, who were now grown men, uh, played, uh, sports at Turner Lake under the rec department. And I just wanted to say that every, every year that my children paid, I paid for them, and it wasn't something that the county gave me, cause I was, was a commissioner. And now I have the pleasure of my grandkids, uh, my granddaughter and my grandson is playing too as well. And I think that's one of the best investments that, uh, our citizens in Newton County could ever made, when we invest in our kids.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you so much, thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number eleven, discussion of removing citizen comments from the agenda.
I think, thank you so much, Commissioner Cowan, I think this is your baby.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, let me make sure everybody's clear on this. Uh, first off, this is not Chairman Baines's idea or anything like that, he did not do this, I proposed this. And then the reason for it was, um, in the last two board meetings, uh, some of the commissioners up here have been accused of stealing money. And, you know, I understand the First Amendment. I went to law school, one of my, uh, best classes was constitutional law and First Amendment. I understand it very well, probably better than most people do. But I know one thing, it does not support slander, your First Amendment rights do not support slander. But, um, when the gentleman mentioned all that the other day, it made me pretty angry. Uh, I had just come out of the hospital from a week, uh, actually two days in a coma, which is not real fun. I was very angry. Now, listening to the people tonight, I'm not as angry as I was. So, I would like, I, I do think though, however, at this point, when we set up how we were going to operate back in twenty seventeen, we, we've made rules for how the board of commissioners would handle the meetings and stuff. We didn't really address the decorum of the board, or of the, uh, citizens as they come in here. And for, for five or six years, it's been, seven years, I guess, it's been, it's been fine. Uh, but here lately, it's just, it's like it's gotten out of hand. And, uh, so, I would make a suggestion or a motion or whatever, um, or if anybody else wants to discuss it, uh, that we, uh, postpone this for a short period of time, or table this for a short period of time. And in the meantime, draft up some rules of decorum for citizens to come up here and make their presentation. I'm interested in what people have, what comments they have, what's going on in the community, cause I don't know it all. But I don't wanna get up here and get blasted and saying I'm stealing money, that, nothing, nothing makes me more angry. And it would make any of y'all angry too. And we need to, we need to stop that. So, I'm not gonna serve on this board after July, or after, uh, yeah, when is, December, December. Not gonna serve after December, one, uh, I have some medical conditions I have to deal with. But, uh, two, I think eight years is enough time to serve. But I hope that this makes it better for the next group of people that come in here. We need to, I, I don't care whether a person respects me, okay? Or any of these other, other, but this board and this government is due respect. It's not, it's not a privilege to come up here and just blast the whole county, and saying the whole county is wrong and corrupt and all this stuff. I'm tired of it. Be honest with you, I'm tired of it. I've had it up to here, and those people that know me, and I know J.C. does very well, we've known each other forty years.
We have.
I have a point that I get to, and I don't wanna get there. So, I would just ask that we, okay, I'll just make a motion that we, uh, table this till the next meeting. In the meantime, that we work with our county attorney to draft up some rules of decorum for people that come up here and make their talk, so that we keep the respect and the right attitude toward making Newton County a good government. Thank you. I make that a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's a motion by, um, Commissioner Cowan that we table this, and second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Um, so let me start, I know I got you down, but let me start off the discussion. So anytime, so, so that you guys will know how it works, anytime you get three commissioners that wanna put something on the agenda, our enabling legislation says we put it on the agenda. Anytime you get three commissioners that says we wanna take something off the agenda, our en- enabling legislation says that we take it off the agenda. So, um, we had three commissioners that wanted on the, want this on the agenda, so that's why it's on the agenda. Um, now, we're gonna go over to Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanna make it very well, very clear, I was one of the ones that supported putting this on the agenda. And it's not to silence our citizens, far from it, we live in a republic, we live in a representative government, where you come to me and I, I bring your voices right here. We also have a, a, a public comments or citizens comment section at the beginning of the meeting, so we're not removing citizens comments. Um, we weren't removing citizens comments. Um, but, and, and the young lady came to the podium earlier and alluded to something, uh, on this topic, she, she spoke of embarrassing. Um, well, let me, let me explain to you what's embarrassing. What's embarrassing is we get a gentleman and open citizen comments that decides he's going to make disparaging comments about an entire race of people. That's embarrassing. We got, we've got a gentleman that came down and stood like here, right here last week, on multiple occasions, by the way, and names commissioners and calls them, basically calls them corrupted on the payroll of whoever we give opera funds to. Ridiculous. Uh, that's embarrassing. We have, we had another, uh, incident last, just last meeting, where we had a, a gentleman, uh, questioned, falsely questioned, the, uh, sexual orientation of a commissioner, of a sitting commissioner by name. That's embarrassing. You wanna talk about embarrassing, that's it, turning our board of commissioners meeting into a Jerry Springer episode. I'm tired of that bull, I'm tired of that bull. And let me tell you something, I, I asked to put this on the agenda along with Commissioner Cowan. Um, and if we don't, if, and I'm gonna make a substitute motion in just a second. But if, if, you know, you don't have to respect me, we've come to a point to where it's not okay to disagree. We've come to a point to where it's not okay to disagree. If I disagree with you, that's not okay anymore. There has to be a villain, there has to be a boogeyman, there has to be a, somebody to blame in every scenario, even if we disagree. And that's just, I, Commissioner, um, Mason and I disagree on something. We just disagree and move to the next item. We don't dwell on it for months. And this just didn't happen last, in the last two weeks. This has been going on for, uh, the better part of a year now. And it's insightful, and it's a shame, and that's embarrassing. So, I would like to offer a substitute motion, the same verbiage as Commissioner Cowan used, but I would like to table this item for thirty days. And in lieu of, when we come back, in lieu of removing the second citizen comments from the agenda, that we have some rules of decorum that we implement in the next, at least have a chance to vote on in the next thirty days, to, to go along with that tabled item. Now, we'll have to vote on that item again, I'm sure, but, um, I would like to have some rules of decorum similar to what the City of Covington's put in place, if, if you don't mind, Chairman Baines. May, maybe not what the City of Covington has, I don't know what theirs are, but some, some high level, some type of high level, um, rules of, uh, some, some type of respect. You know, you don't have to like me, you don't have to agree with me, but you're not going to attack me personally. Either we put something in place, or when you come to attack me right there, I'm just going to leave. And that, that's all there is to it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there, there's a most substitute motion on the floor? There's a substitute motion on the floor?
Second.
Is there, and it's second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner, I'm going to go here, then here, because he has his hand up first, and then Commissioner Henderson. He had his hand up first. Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um... I also wanted this to be a topic of discussion, because this has gotten completely out of hand when it comes to citizens' comments. When I saw this on the, uh, agenda, I did have a conversation with some of the District Two residents about their thoughts and how they felt. And they clearly stated to me, Commissioner Mason, the Board of Commissioners meetings are now a circus for the past three years. There is no decorum. There are individuals coming up here accusing individuals personally with no factual data, but trying to bring about political things to try and make specific commissioners look bad because they're not agreeing with a certain commissioner. And so, it has gone beyond where it needs to be. There are times that this board is not going to agree on everything. They said, Commissioner Mason, we can call you, you answer the phone. We can text you, you respond to text messages. We can email you, you respond to email. As a matter of fact, even on social media, we can reach out to you via social media, and you will respond. This boardroom should be about what can we as a community and a board do to help enhance the quality of life for this community versus attacks? This, this boardroom should not be turned into a session of personal attacks. I personally, I want to hear from the residents. I want to hear if your roads are not being paved. I want to hear if there's trash that hasn't been cleaned up. I want to hear if there are certain things that you want enhanced from a recreational perspective. I personally want to hear those things. But put yourself in the seats of these commissioners. What if it was you sitting in these seats and someone chose to personally attack you and negate what really matters? What really matters is what are the things that we're going to do to enhance our community? And so, for me, the District Two residents are well aware that they can contact me at any time. It doesn't necessarily have to be here in this boardroom. And I would never encourage the District Two residents to stand before this board and personally attack any one of my colleagues, because that is not decorum. And that is not how we are going to handle ourselves in District Two. We are professionals. And so, we handle things from a professional space and place. And so, I would never encourage any residents to come and attack any of my colleagues. And so, I, I, I think that we do need to have a level of decorum. We do need to set that in place, uh, because we want to make sure that going forward, these are professional board meetings, and we are conducting the business of Newton County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. C. You know, I, I was listening and, and, and running, running, he's right. We go back a long years, four or some years, from, um, from me retiring at the City of Covington to me being on the board. I think one reason why they got rid of me, because I was on the Board of Commissioners. It was politics, politics. But nonetheless, where was the decorum? When I was accused for three years and a half of stealing some broccoli and three rolls of toilet tissue? And then when they came up, they got back to the county, they told me, said, "Wait, the, uh, the report is back." I had to get a, uh, open record request and then give it to a former county, uh, former county manager, Lord Kerr, to get the papers. Well, I seen it, but it was, what was it? Nutritious food and toilet paper, broccoli. I said, "My God," you mean? But nobody never stood up, and they would come in here, and, uh, it was most of my Republican sisters and brothers. And say, "You're stealing, Commissioner Henderson, you're stealing." Uh, you know, "We need to do something." And they would, they would talk about me and say, "Stand up." I, I can call the name. And they'd come back and talk, "Look here, I'm, may I please finish running? I'm not, I'm not against you, I'm just telling from my perspective how I've been treated, and nobody never stood up." And they would tell me, "I stood before I could even make a comment at the end of the meeting. Guess what? They had left." And I started to smile and said, "Thank you, Lord." And even what more recently, the audit for Nelson Heights. There was a letter of engagement against me, J.C. Henderson, and I had nothing to do with it. In fact, it was in my, it turned all over to my son. But where were you? Why was it worrying about me? And even Commissioner Mason, we said last time, you said, "Somebody was stealing." You wouldn't call my name this time, but the other time you implied it, it was all right. It was all right, it's all right long as it's somebody else, but when it's you. But I'm so glad that I got my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ deep within my soul. I can take on just about anything and smile and say, "Thank you, Lord." But, uh, hey, there's need to be a change, a big change on, on this board. Now, now you know what I feel like. And this has only been a short while, short time, what, one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, then? Y'all know what I feel like, Commissioner Mason, that's how I feel. And not only was it the, this, my constituency, or the constituency of the county, it was my own board members. I don't know I hadn't stole nothing. Yet you let that lie go on against me, and you never said a word. But I tell you something, what my son once said, he said, "Daddy," he said, "Come as a mother."
Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much, Mr. C. Just to echo a little bit of what Commissioner Henderson stated. You all sat here in the beginning of the meeting, and I asked you to do a substitute motion, and y'all saw what happened. So, we always want to come up here, talk about professionalism and decorum. But when you do it to others, there's no professionalism or decor. I spent on this board, and I had people, I just had someone attack me the other day. Had a lady come up in here, and, and y'all had to put her out. When I've been on this board, I had the whole entire, and some of y'all knew that people were coming up here to attack me. As Commissioner Henderson stated, where were you? So, now that someone come up and speak to you and speak certain things, you want to say they're saying certain things false, it's coming at you, you want to put this on the agenda and silence their voice. Not only that, take it away at you and put, the first one is supposed to be for agenda items only, and the second one's for anything. We always want to say that someone is attacking you, but you do it to others. And you don't say nothing in defense of anybody else. But when it happens to you, oh, you want to play the victim. I'm the victim. I'm the victim. And then you want to say certain, because you directed to me. You want to say, "My, my constituents come up here and say something." There's, there was District Two constituents that were standing up here coming against you. There was District Three, District Five, and District One had came up here and said a certain things. See, I get blamed when residents come up here and speak. No, this, this, these residents are woke. And they see what's going on. And they tired of what's been happening over years, because I'm transparent, and I'm going to put out here if you're doing right or if you're doing wrong. And they're speaking up for their communities, they're speaking up for what's happening in this, in this, in this county, and it's wrong. But now, when it comes at you, you want to silence the residents, because you don't like that they're coming at you and they're, and they're holding you accountable. I have watched other board meetings in other counties and seen commissioners, I mean, seen, uh, residents come at commissioners. You know what those commissioners did? They sat there and waited for their time to speak. And they said worse things than these people have said right here. And I've watched them in neighboring counties and never said anything. So, you want to say in the last three years, things have changed? No, the last three years, people have been woke, and they see what you doing. And so, they're ready to speak out for their community. If Stonely Community want to come up here and speak about what's happening at community, you cannot say it's been political, uh, politics has been happening for two years, and you hid it from me for two years. Because if I would have known about it, uh, two years ago, I would have spoke about it, no matter if Mr. Smith is running against me. I don't care if I'm Mr. Smith running against me, it's wrong. And if the other committee want to come up here and talk about various things, they come and fill up this room, I've never heard anybody say anything when District One and District Five fill up this entire room. They don't never say, "Oh, you brought your constituents to come attack us." No, you say, "Well done, constituents for speaking up." But when District Three constituents come in here, you want to say, "Commissioner Sanders coerced them to come in here." No, they're tired. They're tired of the bull crap that's been happening over years. Y'all used to people not saying anything to y'all, and now they're saying that speaking up and speaking out. You got a problem with it. Now, we want to stop people from speaking. Grow up.
Commissioner, Commissioner, um, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think there's a difference between speaking up and attacking. I mean, night, day, apples, oranges, there's a major difference. I think this board encourages the feedback from the residents. We want to hear that. But there is a difference. And I can tell you, uh, I served on this board, I started back in January of 2019. And so, for, from January 2019 until January of 2021, it was a completely different environment in this boardroom. Now, I can't speak for my commissioners that were here prior to me getting here in January of 2019. But I can tell you, for those two years, this board, sometimes we would disagree. And we wouldn't always see eye to eye. But not one time from 2019 to 2021 that I ever have a resident contact me and say, "Commissioner Mason, you're being attacked on social media because of a decision that you made." That never occurred for the first two years that I sat on this board. I never had to worry about individuals making false claims on social media, doing Facebook lives that don't have full and accurate data. So, yes, we have transitioned over the past three, two, three and a half years. We have begun to do things different. Things have been different. And yes, I agree, the citizens are full aware of what's going on. Oh, how well do they know what's going on? They know. And so, this year, we'll decide and we'll determine what they know. And so, it's out there. It's out there about what the residents know. And we're going to let the, the residents decide. And we're going to let the residents know, what do they know? What are they deciding? And so, we've got to change. If we want to change the trajectory of this community from a positive perspective, we can't continue to do the same things and expect different results. If we want something different, we got to do something different. And we can't get the things that we want by having a strategy of attack. We cannot have, get the things that we need for this community by having a strategy of defaming individuals. It's, it, we can't get where we need to be. And so, that is exactly what we need to change. We need to have a level of decorum in this boardroom and change the whole culture and environment of what's going on in this boardroom. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sir, Commissioner Edwards. Change of mind. Commissioner Sanders?
Um, conversing a little bit with Commissioner Henderson, who's our longest-serving commissioner. He can tell you about slander and defamation of character, probably more than any of us on this board. Um, as, as it was stated, one thing I'm going to tell you, residents, if you have a board where everyone on this board is agreeing and nobody's not saying anything, you better watch, because something happening behind the scenes. If nobody's up here saying or disagreeing with the agenda item, and it's just passing, and nobody's saying anything, you better open up your eyes, because something is happening, somebody's making something behind the scenes. If you have not one commissioner speaking up for the community, and we just constantly passing, passing, passing stuff, you need to question your leadership and saying, "Why are you constantly passing things?" You all pay our salaries. It might not be a lot. I can't say we, we six, well, five of us are not six-figure, okay? So, it's not paying a lot, but your taxpayers' dollars pay our salary to sit here. You voted us in to represent you. You didn't vote us in to be quiet. You voted us in to speak for your community, to speak for the community that we actually live in. We are local elected officials. As you heard me say many times and many times before, I see you in the grocery store. I see you next door. You're my neighbor. That's why I don't call you constituents, I call you my neighbor. That's why I say that. So, you put us in place to speak for you. And you have that right to hold us accountable. You have that right to hold us accountable. As many times as people have come up here and attacked me, not once did you hear me say, "Let's remove citizen comments." Not once have you heard me say, "Remove." Thank you, thank you so much, remove citizen comments. Because why? That's your voice. Now, I have my four minutes that I will address it, but that's your voice. So, I would not be in favor. I would not vote for the substitute motion, the motion or whatever it may be, because I don't think there should be any limitations on a resident on how they should speak. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Pass three, two. Ms. Sanders?
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number 12. Discussion requested lease agreement updates.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, I think, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, myself, as well as Mr. Jockstatter may tag team this one. I know that during the last meeting, there were still some concerns about the lease agreement. And for point of clarity, I know that there was an issue with the rental payment. "In lieu of rent, leasing shall deliver consideration to leasing by providing public programs and services to all eligible citizens of Newton County." These are, this request is in reference to our long-term rentals, our facilities that are doing programming work. So, within the lease agreement, the, the lease requires that the leasing outline how the facility will be used. And the leasing shall use the property exclusively for the purpose described, you know, in reference to the program. Another concern about the potential of subleasing unauthorized. Leasing shall not sublease or authorize any other use of the property except as described above, unless in compliance with the provisions of the Uniform unless in compliance with the provisions of the Uniform Policy governing the general public use and rental of county-owned facility buildings. There was a question, who's exempt from this requirement? The purpose of us standardizing a lease agreement for all long-term leases is to ensure that there are no exemptions. There's a designation between those facilities that are available as long-term rentals, such as where we're operating programs out of in comparisons to the short-term rentals, like event spaces, like, you know, our parks, Turner Lake, so on and so forth. So there are separate policies governing each and are managed by separate departments within the county. And entities will sign separate lease agreements. The facilities available for long-term program operations were outlined in the policy that was submitted to the board in Section I, subsection F. There was another concern in reference to the upkeep of the facility, maintaining the property and the improvements of the property. The structure of the maintenance cost is at the discretion of this board. So if, as a board, you feel that maybe we, the county, should absorb some of the costs of the leasing in terms of the day-to-day repairs, then that's a decision that you all will have to make. However, diminished costs such as maybe pest control and things of that nature, you know, the office of the county manager believes that that should be absorbed by the leasing. Then there was a right-of-entry concern. Leasor or his unauthorized representative shall have the right at any reasonable time to enter the property. And no less than quarterly for any purpose, including for the making of any repairs or alterations, or to conduct any inspection, engineering, testing, so on and so forth. The lease does not explicitly outline a notification of the leasing by the leaser to enter the property. Should this board deem it appropriate, it can be added to the lease agreement. Patrick, do you have anything to add?
I would suggest that some of these provisions are pretty standard lease provisions that you'll see in any lease. If you lease office space, you'll see a lot of these. In fact, if you lease a home, you'll see a lot of these provisions. The idea of this body of documents is, is in response to the concerns that the board has raised, and I think staff has also raised, that there are different rules for different tenants. And we want to try to make those more uniform so that there's not, you know, one person's getting a benefit that another tenant's not getting. The other thing we are trying to address in this is eliminating the notion of handing over a county building to someone else simply to manage it for another end user. We don't need someone to manage a building to rent it out for day-to-day use. You have a department, you have staff that can do that. You know, if I want to rent a pavilion at a park, we're set up to already do that. So the notion of this as someone who's going to occupy a building and make productive use of that building for whatever their organization is there for. We don't intend for this to be a revenue-generating source for your tenant, except through their operations. I mean, obviously, if they're making, if they generate revenue to provide, you know, for example, after-school daycare, then obviously that would be a revenue-generating thing. But we don't want them to take a facility and then just generate revenue by letting other people use it because the county's equipped to do that. But the county, Newton County, does rely on a lot of civic organizations and nonprofit organizations to provide community services. And we're trying to make sure that available facilities are put in those hands and put in the right hands. Ultimately, this is a business decision. Y'all get to make this decision. And I think Mr. Cooper and I will adjust the lease in whatever ways y'all think is appropriate. But I want to make sure that the board had general understanding of the goal of this document, the big-picture goal.
So, Ms. Cooper, you are looking for a motion on something?
If the board is ready to make a motion, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Henderson. Go ahead, sir.
I would raise my hand first. My question is this. I know we had talked about, and just trying to put this in the, I guess, right perspective. Almond, probably now, am I not? The Almond Community Center. I know for years, as long as I've been on the board, I think this is my 27th year, that here had been considered a county facility. We learned recently that it's not. So I guess the question I'm asking you, Mr. Cooper, is, and I know you can do good research, is how long and how much money have we invested in that building? And we know that when it was leased, that the money went to Jim who was running it. And so how much money had he received over those years? And how much money had, because we were paying for all the utilities. Am I, I guess I'm on it, am I, Mr. Cooper? Oh, so how much money have we spent in that particular building? And where are we at now? Because I think at one point, that was part of the lease agreement that we were supposed to get, you did your research. And what is the status of it now?
The building was used for several years, as you all, as you very well know, as a voting precinct. So when we talk about repairs and utilities, if I'm not mistaken, and I think I shared this with the board a couple of months back, we were paying maybe the water bill, and I think in total, over maybe a 10-year period, it was $1,800. We, as you stated, found that we do not, it's not a government building. We did find that out. And I know that at this particular time, you know, we no longer have any oversight or provide any oversight to that facility.
I'm sorry. Just one follow-up question is that are we still paying the utility? Has that been cut, not no longer being funded by the county? And
We have not.
How did, when we, when did we do it?
When we first found out about it, we suspended it immediately.
Okay, so, okay, so it's been there since about a couple of months ago? Couple of days ago?
No, I want to say probably around January, but I can get that information for you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Kind of glad you brought that up. I completely forgot about that. But I actually did do open records on Almond Community Center. And I have received the records from the tax commissioner's office, and I received the records from the tax assessor office. That building has been named as a county building for 30-plus years. They've been tax-exempt for 30-plus years, have not been paying taxes. And I asked that question to our county attorney, because if we was any regular citizen, would have not paid taxes for 30 years, would be locked up. No, no, no excuse. We'll be behind bars, clank, clank. And so I asked that question. And I said, so what happens? Because obviously, the property owners knew they owned it because one of them sit on the tax assessor board. And I found out from the tax assessor board that the exemptions of properties comes from the tax assessor's board. So that is a question that I have, is what is the county going to do? This has nothing to do directly, and I'm going to say his name, it's Charles Bear, is right is right, wrong is wrong. If that was Elena Sanders, holding that building for 30 years, my name would be all in the paper, that I didn't pay taxes for 30 years. And that I was sitting on the board for 24 years, and I exempted my own property. I'd be locked up. So that's why I asked the county attorney, where does the county go from here? Because not only were we paying the maintenance, I mean, paying the water, we were maintaining the building. So that's over $1,800 because we use our county workers to maintain it. So that's taxpayers' dollars that was utilized to maintain the building. If there was something wrong with the building, the roof, or whatever, that came out of taxpayers' dollars. So what are we doing? That's my issue. That's why I said I speak up. Because now that I speak up, people have a problem with it, I'm not afraid to say who it is. So what are we doing? Do we hold people accountable? Or do we just brush it up under the rug? Because as I stated, I had to put myself in there. If it was me, it would not be brushed up under the rug. No resident in Newton County can get away with not paying taxes for 30-plus years. I'm sorry. Now, moving on to the clause. I know we had spoke on in regards to the clause, and I know Ronnie kind of mentioned the clause about the payments. I didn't hear that part. If I did, please, I apologize. There was a section in the contract that says funds have to be turned over to the county. And I was looking for operating procedure, as Ronnie stated last meet, sorry, forgive me. Commissioner Cowan stated last meeting that a clause needs to be put into that contract. And I want to know, that's probably would be Patrick, was that clause put in there when that resident or that the person who actually is occupying the building has an event, and they might be charging a person to use the event, or they might be collecting for an event, and they have to turn those, in the contract, it says they have to turn those funds over to the county. So my question was, are they able to utilize those funds that they acquired from that event that they promoted to pay for the utilities? Because they're responsible for the utilities, or to pay for anything they need up in that building? So the commissioner stated last time, there need to be a clause placed up in that contract. So I didn't receive the revised contract to see if it was there, but I didn't hear it mentioned. So I don't know, Patrick, if you want to comment on that.
So the short answer to your, the second part of your question, can the tenant use those funds for maintenance of the facility? It's not written that way, but if that's what the board elects to do, we certainly can make that revision.
Yeah, we actually
So as it is, the funds are paid over to the county, and they go into the county's general fund.
Yeah, that was kind of the directive we gave last meeting. And it wasn't mentioned. I know Ronnie had to correct me on the terminology, because I was saying standard operating procedure. You said it had to be a clause placed in there. Yeah. And so we kind of mentioned that the last meeting. So that the resident knows that if they're collecting money, if it's an event that they promoted, that's not fair for the county to take over the funding. They could use that for the utilities, because they actually had an event for a fundraiser or whatever, because it's a nonprofit that's maintaining that building. So nonprofits, they have to have fundraisers, they have to have events to maintain the, whatever they're doing within that building.
So the payments to the county only apply to sublease. If they leased, if the operator of the building conducts an event that generates revenue, that's their revenue. But if they lease it to a third party, or sublet it, or license it for use to a third party, that, the revenue generated by the simple use of the facility is what, is what the lease addresses.
So can we make that a little bit more detail in the contract, because it doesn't read that way?
Yeah, we could, we could fix that. I can revise that.
Anyone else? Can we get a motion there? Somebody read the motion?
We had to, the contract needed to be revised.
Get the other motion.
You don't want a, you don't want a lease agreement until we get a final draft.
Right.
I think you just gave the county attorney and the county manager the revisions that you wanted, right?
Well, we got to see it.
I know, but like, kind of like, see it. To read it. Because I may have a different interpretation of somebody else.
So, Mr. Chairman, we can, we can bring the revised document back within the next 30 days.
That's fine. Commissioner, will you move back to your motion, please? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
And can we, Mr. Chairman, can we have that copy sent to us in advance so we can look at it before we get to the meeting?
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Ms. Henderson.
Mr. Chair, the next item that we have is item number 13. It's discussion, funding source for the position within Newton County Sheriff's Office. This will be presented by Ms. Brittany White, Director of our Finance Department. We also have Sheriff Ezel Brown.
Good evening.
Good evening. So at the last meeting, we had discussed a couple of funding options for the mental health position that was needed in the sheriff's department. I did review the ARPA list once I got back to my office the next day, and there was not the $100,000 remaining in the ARPA funds. But we have, before you, you have a budget transfer for this year. So the way that we would work this is we would make an amendment to the FY '24 budget to move $25,000 into the sheriff's budget for the remainder of this fiscal year, because there's only three years left, or three months left. So they would need $25,000 to cover three months' worth. And then we would put the $100,000 into the FY '25 budget. So the budget amendment in front of you is an increase to our interest income, because we have brought in more interest income than we originally budgeted. And then it's an offset increase to their contracted services line item. Are there any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Guys, I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner, it's been motion by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Cowan? That's, man, ain't never my life.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. We should be able to manage for the next couple of months with the co-responder paying in terms of the $25,000. I think we can manage that. And thank you for your recommendation. Thanks to the board.
Any more discussion? All in favor? The pass is five both. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number 18. Topic for discussion from the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, temporary building permits. And the presenter is going to be our attorney, Patrick Jockstetter, along with Ms. Shayna Applewhite, Director of Development Services.
Okay, so, good evening. In case anyone's wondering, this is a presentation about the situation surrounding the Stone Lee community. However, it's not focused exclusively on Stone Lee. It's focused on the ordinance scheme under which that situation arose. So the Newton County zoning ordinance, go to the first page if you would. The Newton County zoning ordinance allows temporary buildings. It defines a temporary building as any structure having a roof supported by columns or by walls and intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animals, or personal property that will be used for a temporary period of time. So a construction trailer of any sort would be classified as a temporary building under your ordinance. Those temporary buildings are allowed by the approval of the, go to the next slide if you would, by the approval of the zoning administrator. So this is, this is the ordinance scheme that, I don't know where it is. Oh, there it is. I got it. So this is the procedure under which temporary buildings are allowed. So they are permitted in essentially every zoning district, in some form or fashion, in every zoning district. And a temporary building is permitted unless it's not, it's not allowed in any district except when used in conjunction with the construction worker pending completion of a permanent building. So in virtually every zoning district, during construction, temporary buildings can be used. Doesn't say how they can be used, they can be used. You see temporary buildings at virtually every large commercial project. There's a construction trailer. It's parked on the property, typically the architect or the engineers, and the contractors are are in there, they're utilizing it for those purposes, those needs that arise during construction. And there are a few limitations on their use. The first is they shall require a building permit only, and that's at development, construction sites. They have to be at least fifty feet from any other residence in any right-of-way line, and they have to be removed when the construction is completed. That is the extent of your zoning ordinance. That's all your zoning ordinance says. And understand that your zoning ordinance is, for lack of a better descriptor, it is the rulebook, the guidebook, under which your zoning administrator must operate. So when an application for a temporary building permit comes on, that's her one. Those are her four paragraphs under which she should evaluate them. And again, I noted they're allowed in all of these different zoning districts. In residential neighborhood development overlay districts, you have to get a conditional use. In the town center overlay district, you have to get a conditional use. In the Almond Crowell Road overlay district, you have to get a conditional use. In the Salem Road overlay district, a conditional use. In the multi-county mixed business park, you have to-- it's an allowed use, subject to some distance requirements. But in all zoning districts, it's an allowed use, subject to that ordinance I just read you. So as long as you comply with those four elements that we just went through, temporary buildings are permitted, period. So, that's led to the situation we're in today. So we've got some recommendations that we want to introduce, and I want to make sure you know, you can't vote on these today. This is a change to your zoning ordinance. We have to go through the zoning procedures law, we have to run public notice, there will be public hearings, it'll go to the planning board, it'll come to you. The first change we want to make is to the first paragraph of that provision, of that ordinance. It currently says that the temporary buildings shall be approved by the zoning administrator. I want to revise that to may be approved. And the reason is, there's some conditions that must be met. The next change I want to recommend is going to be a new section, and it kind of doesn't matter where we stick this, I'll go through kind of where I think they all belong at another place. But, as I mentioned before, the ordinance currently just regulates the building, doesn't regulate what you do in the building. And I don't think anybody has any significant problem with a traditional construction trailer. That doesn't appear to be the focus of anyone's concerns. So the proposed new section under the temporary building ordinance would read, "No temporary building authorized under this section may be used for residential purposes on any lot or parcel smaller than five acres, or on any lot or parcel located within a residential subdivision." Now, that's just a suggestion, if you want to treat it differently, but the idea here was, you can't live in a construction trailer if you're on less than five acres, or if you're in a subdivision. And the reason that I recommend you provide some flexibility is if someone owns twenty acres, they'll be building a house, and they've got their trailer parked, and they're living in their trailer in the middle of the twenty acres, it's probably not going to cause the type of harm that you're seeing today. But if-- obviously, it's your decision to make, and if you feel like it should be more restrictive or less restrictive, obviously, we can address that when the ordinance comes back. The next suggestion we make is that we limit the maximum time. Currently, they come in and they get a permit for as long as the construction is ongoing, right? That's right. So each six months, they come in and they reapply to the staff to extend their permit. And as long as construction is ongoing, under the existing ordinance, they are entitled to be granted the permit. So what our recommendation is, is that we consider some limited period of time. And I don't know how long that should be, and this is a decision for y'all to make. But it used to say that a building can't exist for more than one year, absent subsequent approvals. My recommendation is you shorten that one year to some other amount of time. I don't know if it should be nine months, or six months, or three months. Think about how long it takes to build a typical house, probably, you know, six months, nine months, something like that. And then we suggested that the period of time, that whatever you agree on, the nine months, six months, three months, can only be extended if they come to the board, either this board, or the planning commission, however you elect to do it, and request a conditional use. Or some other mechanism, administrative use variance. But take that decision out of staff's hands completely, and give either the planning commission or this body the ability to evaluate the facts, evaluate the circumstances, and make a decision about whether to continue that temporary building, which again, would only apply to the residential use. The next section that we wanted to address has come up a lot, and that's portable toilet facilities. And again, this normally isn't a problem in a commercial building site, and you kind of have to balance the interests here. You want portable toilets at construction sites. You want those at construction sites. You've got people climbing all over these buildings that aren't finished, doing the work that it takes to build the building. You need them to have a facility. You don't want them to find the woods, or find the bushes, you don't-- you probably don't want them driving up and down in the convenience store and throwing all that truck traffic onto the roads. And so we're not addressing whether or not they're allowed. What we're suggesting is that you impose a new requirement, this will be a new section under the temporary building ordinance, that would say, if there is a portable toilet used in connection with one of these temporary buildings, it has to be kept clean, it has to be properly maintained, it has to be serviced, and it has to be emptied regularly. And the way we police that is that when they come in, and we do this now, I understand, but when they come in, they have to show us evidence that they got a contract with the septic or the provider that does that. We also want to make sure that they're kept out of view of neighbors and streets. And the way the ordinance would address that is setbacks from streets and setbacks from adjacent properties. You also want to be ensure that they're just kept out of view, that they're not visible from the adjoining street or from an adjoining property. Now, that's a difficult thing on a big commercial construction site. But again, you're focused really more on street or neighborhoods and residences. You're not worried about people driving down the industrial boulevard and seeing a warehouse going up with three or four porta-johns in front of it. That's kind of routine, unless you are, and if you are, we'll address it. But my understanding in this current issue is it's more-- this is more directed at residential properties. So this is kind of what the new ordinance would look like, under this recommendation. It seems fairly simple, but I'm going to talk about why I think it addresses the problem going forward. So, first of all, the current Section A, I put the entire ordinance up, and it's fairly obvious, new stuff is underlined. Every sentence we changed is incorrect. So the first thing we would do is we would say temporary buildings may be approved administratively by the zoning administrator, that they can be used in conjunction with construction work for some period of time, less than a year, whatever period of time it is you consider appropriate. And that time can be extended only pursuant to another procedure. We initially suggested conditional use. Your zoning staff has recommended an administrative use variance. So what these changes would do is would prevent sort of this ongoing renewal, 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 without any elected or appointed official becoming aware of it. Because both of those procedures are going to require some level of public notice and public hearing. We didn't propose changing this section, that they can be used at development, construction sites, requiring a building permit. The new Section C would prohibit the use for residential purposes on any lot or parcel smaller than five acres, or any lot or parcel in a subdivision. Again, the five acres, up to you, you want to make it more restrictive, less restrictive, that's entirely up to this board. But that will focus the attention of this ordinance into the residential component. Again, I don't think there's a lot of angst about a traditional construction trailer. It's when somebody's living in it that it creates a little bit of a problem. There's already a fifty-foot setback requirement, and we would suggest adding this language or something like it for the portable or temporary toilet facilities, and it's a little more detailed. But again, they are required to be kept and maintained in a clean and sanitary condition, emptied and serviced no less than weekly, placed in a location that is not visible from any adjacent residence or street right-of-way line. And then no portable or temporary toilet facility may be placed, kept, or maintained within fifty feet of any creek, stream, river, lake, pond, residence, or street right-of-way line. The notion there is let's make sure these things are put where they cause the least harm. And then to evidence that they're complying with this, they have to provide to the zoning administrator written evidence that shows there is a schedule in place, and that they're adequately maintaining that service contract. So these ordinance changes will provide, I think, relief from the situation that exists today. Now, here's the rub. We can't go back in time. The existing permit in Stone Lee can't be disturbed. There's a whole theory of law, it's called vested rights. If I give you a permit, I can't take it away from you unless it was illegally granted where you violated the terms of the permit. And y'all saw how basic the original ordinance was. I don't believe there's any violation of the original ordinance. So you can't-- we can't-- if you adopted this thing tomorrow, which you can't, it's going to take some time before you can adopt it. These rules do not apply to the current permit, under which anyone is occupying one of these residential trailers. That can only go into effect at the earliest upon renewal. So at the earliest, when someone who's using one of these as a residential building comes in to renew the use, we can apply these new regulations. Which would trigger them, like any other thing in your zoning ordinance, if there's a denial by staff, they appeal, and they can walk through that appeal process. And they do have an opportunity to-- if the planning commission or the board, or the Board of Appeals, or this board decide to grant the appeal from a denial by the zoning administrator, then they could conceivably continue to operate in the property. I asked Ms. Applewhite and her staff to do a little bit of research, and we found that -- I think I'm going to miss these numbers, you tell me if I'm wrong. Over the past couple of years, there have been about forty-five? Thirty-two permits in the last three years, and these are on residential properties? Okay. Thirty-two total over the past three years. Three on residential.
Three on residential.
Subdivisions.
Two on residential.
Right. Okay. So, this new ordinance would likely impact three people immediately. I mean, it's going to impact more people, but unless any of these non-subdivision properties are on less than five acres, which I don't think we went that far, we didn't dig that deep to find out. We'll find out when they come in and make their new applications. So that's-- the idea here was not that you should outright ban them, because it probably doesn't make sense to outright ban a temporary use of a trailer during a construction, even of a house. But there's places where it doesn't fit, places where it might fit. And then there's some regulatory things you can do to make sure that these situations don't drag on forever. And there's also a failsafe. The failsafe is, if staff doesn't approve it, the owner or the person that wants to occupy can come to the Board of Appeals, or to this board, and ask for permission, or ask that you overrule the denial. It's no different than kind of any other use of property. There's a permitting process or an application process, if it's denied, they can appeal. So that's how we addressed it. We thought about-- I thought about addressing it in a number of different ways. One way would be, you know, defining, like an RV, is any wheeled-- a building on wheels designed to live in, but virtually every construction trailer sits on wheels. A lot of times, the bigger ones, they're just shielding the wheels, or they don't look like it when you drive past it. Somebody could live in a construction trailer if they wanted to, you know, even a traditional construction trailer. You throw a bed, you start sleeping in it. So I didn't want to define the structure to be residential or non-residential, and that kind of-- and I think I mentioned to you that we may want to do that, but the problem with that is, if we focus on the structure, somebody might say, "Well, this is an office, I'm just sleeping on the couch." So what I wanted to do is focus on the residential use of it. I don't care what the bill-- what the structure looks like. If you're living in it, then that's where this ordinance ought to jump in, because living in is where the problems are solved. So that's sort of where we are now. That's our-- that's our kind of suggestion about how to address this. It's going to take a little while. If we proceed with this as a staff-initiated text amendment to the zoning ordinance, it's going to have to-- we still have to advertise it, there have to be public hearings, have to go to the planning commission, have to come to this board, there's public hearings all along the way. With, you know, if you'll authorize us, we will proceed with that, and it may change over time. You may hear comments from the public that maybe there's something left out, maybe something needs to be added. You'll hear public comments, obviously, at the board meetings, the planning commission may make recommendations. All of those things will be taken into account. I think your zoning administrator, I think she's still working on it. I kind of dropped a lot of this on her, and I think she's-- we've been working on this, and she's been coming up with some ideas that I hadn't thought about. And frankly, I think that's where a lot of the septic tank stuff came from. We may change the conditional use to some other mechanism. But generally, the outline, as I've shown it, is how we kind of view a way to correct the problem. You know, one of the things you don't do is you don't adopt an ordinance that addresses an individual. You adopt an ordinance that addresses a problem. So we don't adopt an ordinance that applies only to one person. We adopt an ordinance that's going to apply to everybody. And that's really the way we tried to address it, is what can we do going forward that this situation doesn't happen again? And look, I think you will probably-- you or another body, another board, will probably deal with that specific situation on a one-to-one basis before long. But as we viewed our instructions, it was what can we do to address this problem? And this is probably the most effective way to move forward.
Questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Sanders?
So you stated for us to give you permission, is that for today? Do we move-- how does that work?
I think it would be good today if we could get a motion authorizing us to put this through the zoning process, to move it along, because it takes time.
Okay.
You know, by the time we run the notices and get it on agendas, I mean, at best case--
You said the notice takes about sixty days, right?
Yeah, I mean, best case to get this back in front of you is going to be January, probably second of the year.
You said three months? Okay.
Possibly, yes. So, we'd like authorization to move forward, so we can say this, you know, when we walk through the process, this came from the board.
Okay.
And you're not necessarily approving the exact language, you're just authorizing us to move forward.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to give our county attorney, as well as our Development Service Director, the directive, the approval to move forward.
Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Sanders, and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes five votes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number nineteen, which is the alcohol license. It's the first reading. We have Salem Food and Gas, thirty-five, thirty-eight, Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six, Rajad Dervovic, in District Three.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, item number twenty, citizen comments. This is an opportunity, we allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Hey, I'm Samantha Day, and I'm with the Stone Lee community. Ms. Sanders and the county attorney, I want to thank you for, you know, going out for the ordinance. I do feel like it's a county issue. I mean, it's regulated by other counties about living in a temporary structure. Something else that I had that I wanted to talk to you about was the-- I understand that people are coming up here and doing planning and doing false allegations. I know it's wrong. And the job I work in, I've had people make false allegations, and I've had people complain, but there's nothing-- I mean, you just have to listen to it, and then it's investigated, and then, you know, it comes out, the truth comes out, because it wasn't true. And I understand that. And I mean, I understand that people do-- people are not professional about how they do things. It's wrong, it's not right, but we can't control what everybody does. And also, if you look on the Newton County site, because I'm a first-time person coming up here speaking and giving my opinion and my voice, and on the website, you have a Newton County Rules of Conduct for Business. And if you look at it, on there, in Section one one zero ten, it says-- and I was kind of confused at why it says at the beginning-- let me get to it, sorry. It says, "The Newton County Board of Commission welcomes visitors to board meetings and is willing to hear any person or persons desiring to appear before the board who is not currently announced candidate for public office." It says that in your rules. And I'm not trying to silence Mr. Smith, I'm glad he came up here to talk. I think he had a right to talk. But in your rules, it says-- and there's other candidates that have been up here speaking. But if that's in your rules, you owe it to hold the expectation-- but if that's in your rules, you owe it to hold the expectations and the rules. You have rules in here of how people are supposed to talk, and how they're supposed to be respectful. They're already here. Uphold them, and uphold the expectations during the meetings. What happened with the video, that, that's petty. Come on, let's, let's work together as a team. I can't, I couldn't go to my boss and show him a video of something and be like, "This is what you said." I'd get fired. I mean, I couldn't do that. I mean, we got to work together. I mean, people in the community are saying, "Did you see what happened on the commissioners?" And I never even paid attention until I had an issue that I needed to come speak my voice. And I mean, I just felt like, I mean, I feel like we can all work together. And I feel like I've reached out to you, and I've heard back from you, and Mr. Baines, you never even replied back to her on her question. And, I mean, I just wanted to know why you were saying we were lying. I didn't want to have to wait two weeks to hear what the lie was about. And then he comes up here and tells me, gives us the perfect solution that's fair to everybody. So, thank you.
My name is Barbara Mary Johnson, and I have been here and have spoken to every one of you. Except for you, but I did speak to you today, Stan. Now, when we come here, we come here to take care of business. All of our personal, whatever dislikes or whatever, we're supposed to be consenting adults. Let's keep it that way. Personal things, you take it in the room, and we don't have to hear about it. If there's someone who comes up here and disrespects any of you, get them out. We have offices all over the place. We're here to conduct business, personal feelings, attitudes, whatever, is not part of the business here. And I'm surprised, I haven't been here in a while, but today was completely different than what I'm used to. Business has been taken care. Each time I came up here and talked about those alligators, you all got rid of them, okay? Satisfied. Today was like a new arena, never seen it before. And I think the citizens do have a right to speak about what's going on in the community where they live. You guys are supposed to set it up for us, and we follow through, and we give our comments because no one in here thinks the same. We're all different, we have our own opinions, and we're supposed to be consenting adults. Let's keep it that way, and be happy as a family, and say farewell. Good night, thank you for hearing.
Anyone else?
I never intend to speak, but I always have to, it just happens, Annette Austin. On decorum, I agree that decorum should be had in any public forum. And the young lady who just spoke earlier said that there are rules already in place. No one should feel threatened physically. Cursing should not be, racist and sexist epithets should not, should be condemned, but these things just need to be enforced. However, it should be noted that proper decorum, the tone I believe that you are seeking, starts at the top, it starts with you all. And, and there's been a serious problem with that for the past three years. And so the response that you're seeing from the constituents is appropriate, because it's fitting what's happening at the top. Perfect example, as was mentioned earlier, the lack of decorum today demonstrated, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper, but that was totally and completely unprofessional. You had us sit through at least ten minutes of a transcript of Mr. J.C. Henderson, and then you played the video of the exact same thing that you just read. Now, I, I, we were just trying, puzzled, I was just trying to figure out, like, what was the purpose and the reason for that? And I'm trying to give you the benefit of doubt, Mr. Cooper, but you're not helping, okay? So, you know, th- these are the kind of things I know you will never let happen again, okay? Because you've listened to the people here who are very disappointed with that, and, and you know, people grow and learn, so this is your growing moment, okay? You're gonna grow from that, okay? And never do it again, okay? I should note, Mr. Barn, Baines, I understand that three commissioners came to you, right? Okay. But you're the chair, and I do hope you feel better, and I'm really sorry to hear about your sickness, and I understand you being angry, but he's the chair. And so when you came to him with your angry response, just stop the meeting, stop people from speaking, you know? And when the other two chimed in, "Yeah, that's a good idea." Uh, Mr. Baines, you're the chair, you should have said, "Ah, nah, I don't think that's a good idea, I think you should need, you know, you should," and, and you're shaking your head, but, but you're the chair. So you should have had a little wisdom and said, "I don't think that's a good idea, um, we can't stop people from speaking, but here's an idea. Why don't we enforce decorum? And while you're at it, grow a thick skin." Because that kind of comes with your position, okay? I've been the head of a couple of boards, and I've had things, you know, thrown at me, it just comes with the position. You grow a thick skin, you learn diplom, how to be diplomatic, you learn how to talk to people afterwards, okay? It comes with the position.
Thank you so much. Next, please.
I heard a couple of things mentioned that interest me, embarrassing behavior. I submit to you that the behavior of the entire board has been nothing short of embarrassing. In fact, as Commissioner Sanders was trying to make a motion to amend the agenda, she was rudely interrupted by Commissioner Mason. So where does the respect begin, is my question? Another thing I heard that interests me was that it takes three commissioners to vote on an item to be placed on the agenda. And if that's the case, then it tells me the real story of how the board feels, the Newton Board of Commissioners feels about taxpaying citizens of District Three. As I sit and listen to projects completed with twenty-seventeen splotch funds up until twenty, uh, twenty-three splotch funds, I continue to ask the question of where are District Three's splotch funds, and what have they been used for to improve our quality of, of life? Someone said tonight, "This board should be about what's best for the community." I'm here to ask, whose community are we referring to? Certainly not the District Three community, because we can't even get three commissioners on this board to agree, nor the chairman, nor the county manager, nor anybody. None of you have the level of decorum you are asking for to support projects in District Three with the money we have paid in property taxes and the special option local sales tax. You, you say the board is due respect, I say the citizens are due respect. Newton County needs to be a, a good government for all, not just the communities where you think investment should be made. The priority projects for District Three should be, number one, the sidewalks, I'm told that we received an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar congressional grant for sidewalks in District Three, and that money is at risk for being returned because there's been no movement. Twenty-eleven splotch fund projects, funded projects, whereas all other districts have completed their projects with their twenty-eleven splotch funds, District Three's projects have yet to be started. The board has already moved on to twenty-twenty-three splotch funds, whereas District Three has yet to benefit from twenty-eleven and twenty-seventeen splotch funds. When, when is the discussion on the Park Westside Youth and Senior Center going to be added to the agenda? Shall we also lose the four-million-dollar grant for lack of action? Board members have said what is embarrassing to them, while I submit to you that I am thoroughly embarrassed that District Three has to keep begging, begging to be placed on the agenda for projects that we, that were approved long ago with no action as of today, April second, twenty-twenty-four. This is not what's best for the community. Do, uh, don't just say that you want respect, give it also.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, commis, yes, sir.
With all due respect to Ms. Sanders, Cowan, Mr. Edwards, and Mr. Mason, you differ on decorum. Understandable. I'm not gonna take sides with any of you. I believe there needs to be decorum. I believe that anytime you come before a body like this, you should be respectful, but you should be able to express yourself. Accusations, especially if they're false, you don't, there's not any place for that, and I recognize that, I'm not trying to say that. But I also will say this, from a taxpayer standpoint, you spend my money, you understand that, you not only mine, but all of these people out here and everybody in this camp, you're responsible for it. So when there are questions that come up, and people get heated about it, just understand, you're in the kitchen, and it gets hot. Be willing to accept it, and be willing to put up with the flak, for lack of a better way of putting it, and understand that you're gonna probably get some stuff come at you that you don't really like. You may be accused of some things you don't really like. Now, if those accusations are false, you've got to live with it. I think all of us have lived in times and places we've done things where somebody accused us of something that wasn't true. But then again, we've probably been in some situations where maybe it was true, we really didn't like it, and we didn't like to be called out on it. But then, just, just making an observation there, and just saying, guys, we've elected you, we put you in here, please respect the taxpayer, and respect our positions and our opinions of you, whether you like them or not, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. For, for those of you who are here for the first time tonight, or the second time, I would encourage you to come back and learn the patterns, um, they exist. So, and you, and you'll get to see, uh, tonight you showed, you got to see my, um, my emotion. I hope you won't have to see it again, uh, but you may, I don't know, but, um, I, I would encourage you to come back and, and, and understand both sides of the story, and get to see and understand the patterns that take place. It'll, it'll become a much clearer picture for you in, in the long run. And, uh, I'm, I, I just, I'll, I'll, I'll say it again, um, if you want to disagree with me on something, then by gosh, stand there and tell me we disagree on it. Tell me why you disagree with me, and then go sit down, and I'll go home. But it, when, when you're gonna get personal, I, I'm just not gonna listen to it. Throw me out of office, I don't care, there's a election coming up, get rid of me. But I'm not gonna sit here and listen to personal attacks, and I'm, I don't give them, and I'm not gonna listen to them. So, uh, I, I get, you get respect, before I even know you, you get my respect. Uh, you have to lose my respect, you don't have to gain it, that's one thing that's a little different about me. But that's where we're gonna go, and it's not about respect for me, it's about, it's about not getting personal. So, uh, that, that's where I stand, you're not gonna change my mind on it, so, um, that, that's where it's gonna be for me. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Sir, ho, ho, hold on, hold on, hold on one second, hold on one second. Go ahead, oh, Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think we've done some great work tonight, um, and so I am proud of this board collectively addressing the concerns that needed to be addressed, uh, within our community, uh, as well as how we conduct ourselves in this particular professional board meeting. And so I'm just excited to see, um, the positive progress that we are gonna see, uh, moving forward from today, and all of the things that we've discussed, uh, all the things that we've laid out on the table. I'm excited to see where we're gonna move forward from today, and the progress that not only this board, but this community is going to make, uh, for a, a great place to live, work, and to play. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Sir, come on up.
Well, my name is Chris Howard, this is my river show. I want to say, I'm the one that wanted to kind of leave when you guys were a little bit too, because I was kind of angry at the way you all always stacking the deck against Commissioner Sanders over here. But even when, uh, Mr. Edwards came over to St. Paul, not St. Paul, Murray Church, all black people in there, and he said, "Don't bring out the redneck in me." That kind of got me ticked off at you, you on a black church talking about redneck? So I kind of eased with it. But anyway, I'm apologizing to you guys for saying what I said. And me, when me and you was out in the street talking, you were recording me on the phone. I didn't think that was right, but who already got that to? So, I ain't gonna never say nothing that I'm gonna be ashamed of, deny saying. But anyway, just want to apologize to you, if you go be in office, you go get talked about. President, uh, Biden, and Trump had a dollar for everything everybody said about you, they have all the money. You got that for me.
Commissioner Sanders?
Um, commissioners, today I attended a cohort for the four-million-dollar grant. Um, it was required attendance, and our consultant was not there, was sent to both of us, so I'm concerned about the movement of that four-million-dollar grant, because HUD has been sending us required meetings to attend, and I'm not sure if we have a consultant still managing that four-million dollars that's sitting there. But these cohorts are required to attend. I attended a day at two o'clock, and there were tons of people that were on it, and Newton County was not fully represented. So we need to make sure our consultants are going to these meetings, because they're breaking down how to move forward, how to obtain the money, how to write certain things on the application, what's missing and so forth. So if we saying we're gonna keep this money, if not, we need to tell HUD to take it back if y'all don't want to keep the four-million dollars. So, because the consultant is not going to the meetings. Just to reiterate on the comment that was made by Mr. Smith, and the only reason why I'm reiterating that is because it sta, he stated that I'm only working with Stoneley for political reasons. As I mentioned, everybody knows since I've been in office, if you call me to work on a situation, I'm there, no matter what, I can send you a list. I didn't find out about the Stoneley situation till one of the residents posted it on Facebook. That's how I found out. I had no idea that this was going on for two-plus years. And they put it on Facebook, and I sent that directly to the county, and that's how I found out, and then the residents started contacting me, because I gave them my information directly, and that's when I started working on them. It is never a political issue when somebody votes you in place to work with constituents. To say they doing certain things for political reasons, then you shouldn't be a leader, you shouldn't be in office. If you feel that any time a person is working with a resident that they're constituent, and you're calling it political, that's a problem. You don't definitely know what the position of a commissioner is. Moving on to time limits on various things. Commissioners only get four minutes to speak. There's gonna have to, there needs to be time limits on other reports as well, because they're becoming very lengthy. So if commissioners only get four minutes, then everybody should get four minutes to speak. We need, we need to think about that. If, if the constituents only get three minutes to speak, then we need to, we need to look at that, it's, it's, it's getting very lengthy. Now, when we're doing discussion and agenda items, the commission's gonna talk about, we, the commission's gonna talk, when we're doing discussion and agenda items, that's, that's where we're supposed to talk about it. But reports, and they're not pertaining to the issue, we, we, we gotta stop that. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Miss C. Mr. Cooper, if you would be so kind, could you give me a copy of the, of the report, so that I could, for my particular records? And just to, to be sure that I get it, could it, uh, could it be open, I am asking for an open record, report of that, copy of it, one that I, that's leasurable, that can be read or played? And, um, in closing, uh, I, I used to work, shoot, for thirty-some, twenty-four years for the city of Covington, and I've been over here, uh, thinking my twenty-seven years as a, as a District Four Commissioner, long-serving. I'm the third commissioner in District Four since it was created. I've never in my life went to, um, a person that had the opportunity or the ability to hire me and do stuff like that to them in my life, and, 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 uh, you know, I'm, I'm praying for you, and pray for, let's pray for one another, because at some point, I mean, what you gonna do, you get mad with, uh, Chairman Baines, you gonna do the same thing? You get mad with, uh, DeMar, you gonna do the same thing? You get mad at Ronnie, do the same thing? At some point, I mean, if you didn't want to be up here, and you thought we were gonna be... At some point, I mean, if you didn't want to be up here, and you thought we were going to be rosy, then I think you picked the wrong job. And we're paying you a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. Am I correct? Hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, then I think we need for it to be a little bit better. Thank you.
Commissioner Cowan.
I'm tired and ready to go home, have no comments.
You buy me a biscuit, man. Come on. Buy me a steak. Ain't mad anymore.
Got to take a motion that went adjourned, please. Motion by Commissioner Edwards, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Stand adjourned.